Third Town Council Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting. It is 6:35 and councilors present are Parker, Franco, Heed, Opry at Water Schmidt, and Granatoski. Counselor Zepary cannot be with us this evening as he is ill and Counselor Baumgartner is on his way from his place of employment. Calendar and Communications, Counselor Parker.
I attended the groundbreaking at the middle for the Middle School Project that was well-attended and TVCCA meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Franco.
I also attended the Middle School Groundbreaking. I would like to thank everybody who was instrumental in bringing it to a successful fulfillment, including this council who did quite a bit of work, I would say. I attended, actually I was invited to the Fitch Robotics Team meeting this past week and they're on their way to World Champs right now. It's very exciting for them. And it was quite eye-opening and it's a lot more than just a simple club. They have like forty students, they have mentors from the community that are helping them. And they're over in Pleasant Valley School, so I also got to see a little bit of that as well. And I also wanted to invite anybody and everybody in the town to help clean up Groton for Earth Day. The Beautification Committee is hosting a cleanup day on Saturday, the 27th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Groton Senior Center. So we'll meet there at 9:00 and hand out supplies and we'll meet back up at about and maps of locations that need cleaning and then we'll meet back up at about noon at the Senior Center for some awards and some light refreshments. So that's that. Counselor Heed.
So I attended the Advisory Board to Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority, SCWA. I also attended the Stop and Shop Picket Line to show support. And then I was also along with Counselor Opry attended a task force to look at the RFPs for Sealy School. And finally, Communications, I spoke to Mark Berry about with the Parks and Rec about the Noink School property and he arranged for several volunteers from the sub-base to come on up and build some of the raised beds. I guess they were going to fill them in with dirt today. And his first order of business is to contact people who previously had garden plots to give them the option to get the same plot that they had in the past. After that, he'll be putting, he'll make it available on the regular Parks and Rec website to anybody who wants a plot. Along those lines, I took a ride over to the Human Services Building and took a look at the public gardens over there and I don't know how many there are, but it was beautiful, pretty stunning. So aside from that.
I like your blue autism pin, very nice.
Thank you.
Counselor Opry.
Yesterday, I had the pleasure of going to Avery Point. They were having a celebration for Earth Day and I was very pleased to take place of the illustrious leader, Atrice. And it was really nice, it was very nice. Everybody was very good and I read a proclamation from the town of Groton and proceeded to forget to leave it. So I'll get it back to them. But that's about it.
And RTM Moderator Evan is the one that organized that event, correct?
Yes, yes.
Very nice. Thank you for going on behalf of the council. Counselor Atwater.
Oh, David was with me.
Yes, I attended the Echo Husky Birthday Celebration at Avery Point. I attended a SCAR, you know, Recycling Recovery Authority meeting. I went to a C transportation meeting. I went to the CCM Regional Seminar that was held here about Municipality Week. I went to the presentation at the library last week about the Paquonic Village Developments. I went to several budget meetings. I went to a nonprofit organization meeting in Stonington where they have a group of nonprofits that meet once a month at the library to discuss calendars and plans and what people are doing, which I thought really was, might be worthwhile that we do here. And I took a ride down to Noink Gardens today after the, oh, I went to the dedication. And after the dedication, I went down and took a, and there's eighteen rather large plots set up, so there's like double the size of what they were and they really look nice and so forth. So I hope they get dug in and used and so forth. And that's it.
Counselor Schmidt.
Nothing further to add.
Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner.
Nothing to report outside of looking forward to attending the Saturday's Earth Day Cleanup, so. Looking forward to it.
So I'm happy that the United Food and Commercial Workers and Stop and Shop Corporation have seemed to have come to an agreement and everyone can get back to their normal routine with their shopping, so that's a, that's a good thing for everybody. The CCM event as well that was held here in Groton, it was very nice. We hosted leaders from around the community, even from as far away as I think Guilford is about where the one gentleman was from.
Yes.
Attended the annual meeting of the Pequot Woods Board of Trustees and they have some new signage out there. It's very nice and there were some Boy Scouts that did some of the wood signage, but the town Parks and Rec Department did the nice colorful signs and they have one at each entrance, one on Route One and one on Sandy Hollow Road, so it's a very nice area to walk. The groundbreaking was wonderful and all of the councils before us, the boards of ed before us, everybody worked well together to get this done along with our state reps. But I have to say, we are the ones that pushed that ball over the finish line, so have to give us some props. And I received a very nice letter from a young man that came and spoke to us at the night of our budget hearing, the little boy from karate. And he invited me to go to his tournament and I actually went to the tournament and he wrote me a little nice handwritten letter and took a picture of himself and little he and everything, so it was very cute. So thank you very much for sending the letter. Approval of minutes, Counselor Baumgartner.
I'll make a motion.
Twenty nineteen. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole minutes of April 9, 2019. So move.
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Heed. Is there discussion on the minutes? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approval of the minutes 2019-259, April 9, 2019, Committee of the Whole, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Abstention?
Mm-hmm.
So seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Parker. We are at eight councilors as Counselor Zepary is not with us and Counselor Baumgartner is here. So we are done with that. Oh, I forgot to do, I guess I can do it under other business. Give me one second, please. I need to appoint that chair of the Sustainability Committee. All right, so the next few items, we're going to be moving 5A through 5F in Cow and then we'll be recessing to a council meeting, a special council meeting, and then coming back into Cow. Okay? So if you have your separate packet that the Finance Director left for you, and if you have these resolutions, do you have these resolutions? Okay. So the very first one is 2019-290 approving FYE 2020 budgets. It is the top half of Attachment 1. Good evening.
Good evening.
Have a seat. Sorry, I forgot to call you up. Thank you for calling.
I know. Leave it for me. Yes, it is, too.
Yeah. Are you, so you read the top half, Counselor Parker, please.
Resolution approving budgets for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020. Be it resolved that the budgets for the various funds hereinafter set forth are hereby approved and adopted and the amounts on the total appropriation line are hereby appropriated for the functions specified and the amounts listed under the heading Financing Plan are hereby established as approved budget estimates for the type of revenues specified and include all estimated FYE 2020 cash revenues except FYE 2020 current property taxes, which will be estimated for the budget purposes by separate resolution when the FYE 2020 tax rate is set. And further, that a complete detailed document indicating all function appropriations is hereby made a part of this record and shall be submitted to the town clerk for public record for budgets as follows. General Fund, Golf Course Fund, Sewer Operating Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Monford Cove, sorry, Special Taxing District, Revaluation Fund, Recreation and Senior Activities Fund, Borrow It CT, Sewer District Fund, Capital Reserve Fund, Fleet Reserve Fund, Technology Replacement Fund, and Human Resources Assistance Fund. I so move. Oh, I apologize, wait a minute, I still have to read the rest of it.
No, that's it. Human Services. Human Services Assistance Fund, please.
I did say that.
That's okay.
Oh, Human Services Assistant Fund, I apologize.
And that's, that's it for that resolution?
That's it for that resolution.
Second. So moved by Parker and seconded by, seconded by Heed. Everybody else. Franco? I'm sorry. Mr. Burt.
Just pointing out that we're still in the Cow. Typically, we would just read the, to recommend a resolution because you're going to have to read that in the actual council meeting upcoming.
You don't want this read here?
You don't need to read it right now, no.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's fine. So, so all you want us to do is to recommend the resolution now.
Right.
And then we're going to go back in later. My apologies.
Can we save it for Juliette to read again?
No. We're going to make you read them.
I'm going to edit that one back in.
All right, so. Then page ten. Counselor Parker. Much easier this time.
The big one.
The big one.
Big packet.
Oh, back on ten?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the FYE 2020 budgets.
Second. Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. All those in favor of the resolution approving the FYE 2020 budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. 5B, 2019-291, Computation of Tax Rate for General Fund FYE 2020 on page 11. Counselor Franco.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution computing a tentative tax rate for General Fund FYE 2020.
Second.
By Franco, seconded by Heed. All those in favor of recommending a resolution to set the tentative tax rate for the General Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, eight in favor. Counselor Heed, 2019-292, Computation of Tax Rate for Monford Cove FYE 2020.
Motion to recommend a resolution computing the tax rate for Monford Cove fiscal year ending 2020. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Parker. All those in favor of 2019-292, Computation of Tax Rate for Monford Cove, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. 5D, 2019-293, Computation of Tax Rate for Groton Sewer District FYE 2020 on page 13. Counselor Opry.
Didn't you just read it?
Nope. I made the motion right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Motion to recommend a resolution computing the tax rate for the Groton Sewer District FYE 2020.
Second.
Moved by Opry and seconded by Atwater. All those in favor of setting a tax rate for Groton Sewer District, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. 5E, 2019-272, Setting the RTM Annual Meeting Date on FYE 2020 Town Budget on page 14. Counselor Schmidt.
What about, what about Counselor Atwater?
I'm sorry, Counselor Atwater. It's been a long day, Counselor Atwater.
Yes. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving that the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting be held on Tuesday, April 30, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the Groton Senior Center, 102 Newtown Road, Groton, Connecticut.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Franco. Is there discussion on the RTM budget meeting? If you look on the following page, there's the list of when all the various functions will be considered. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2019-272, Setting the RTM Annual Meeting Date, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And we need to do 5F, 2019-276, Historic Documents Preservation Grant on page 17, please. And this is Counselor Schmidt.
I recommend for resolution approving Town Manager John Burt to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality a contract with the Connecticut State Library for a historic documents preservation grant. I so move.
Second. Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Opry. Would you like to ask any questions on this particular item? We have the clerk here if you have questions about the grant. Did you wish to say anything about the grant?
Counselor Franco's hand, if you want.
Counselor Franco.
I was just going to ask, this is the same type of grant we approved last year as well.
It is and we are finishing up a preservation project to protect the records, so right now, all of our vital records, well, they have been, many of them have been already unbound, but they were bound in hardcover books and very difficult to copy without deteriorating the pages. So I don't know, it was a big project, so we're almost finished with it, so. Then we'll move on to something else. This is funny, this is funny that when we do a recording on land records, a portion of our, the recording fee goes to the State Library. And so depending on how much is left in that kitty after the legislature goes through and takes things, will depend on how big the grant is for each town. And that depends on the size of the town. You have a large town, a medium town and a small town. That's how they categorize the state of Connecticut, town size, and we're considered a medium-sized town. So this year, the grant is $7,500. Last year, it was $6,500. It's been as low as $4,000 since I've been town clerk and as high as $10,000 right before I was town clerk.
Counselor Baumgartner.
Good to see you, Clerk.
Sorry, I thought you were done.
So I see that there aren't any local funds that match or, you know, match the grant funds that come from the state. In your eye, you know, is it the grant funds coming from the state sufficient to cover those costs? I see that, you know, the medium-sized municipality has a population between 2,000 and 16, you know, 70,000, so Groton seems to fall most kind of halfway in between. So, you know, is that amount sufficient to doing that work?
Thanks for the question. What really this grant is, it allows me to do a certain portion, so I couldn't do the entire project on one year's grant, so we spread it out year by year. You really wouldn't want to do a project that had to be done all in one year for that amount of money. You couldn't, you couldn't, you know, I couldn't do it, it would be, so. The reason why there isn't any matching funds is because this is specific to preservation of, preservation from the State Library to town clerks. There are other grants through the State Library for other departments and other organizations, but this particular grant is strictly for historic document preservation. Saying that, there is a long list of things that fall under the guideline, so, you know, even a legislative software program falls under that.
Did you have further questions?
I did, I'm sorry. I just have one more. When do you foresee this being completely done?
I believe I will have another year cycle. I may not do it next year though, because I'm, even though I've minimized the amount of books we have in our vaults, in our land record, excuse me, in our vital vault, I still need more room, so I may have to use the money to purchase more shelving.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for the clerk? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on 2019-276, the Historic Documents Preservation Grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Okay, so we are recessing Committee of the Whole at 6:55. It is seven o'clock. It is Tuesday, April 23rd and we are, I'm calling to order the Town Council's Special Meeting. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So all councilors are here except Counselor Zepary, who's not feeling well.
Correct.
And there are no citizens petitions because it is a special meeting. We don't, we don't offer citizens petitions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we have several items to get through this evening. The first is 2019-2901, Approving FYE 2020 Budgets. Counselor Baumgartner, please.
Resolution approving budgets for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020. It resolved that the budgets for the various funds hereinafter set forth are hereby approved and adopted and the amounts on the total appropriation line are hereby appropriated for the functions specified and the amounts listed under the heading Financing Plan are hereby established as approved budget estimates for the type of revenues specified and include all estimated FYE 2020 cash revenues except FYE 2020 current property taxes, which will be estimated for budget purposes by separate resolution when the FYE 2020 tax rate is set. And further, that a complete detailed document indicating all function appropriations is hereby made a part of this record and shall be submitted to the town clerk for public record for budgets as follows. General Fund, Golf Course Fund, Sewer Operating Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Monford Cove, Special Taxing District, Reevaluation Fund, Recreation and Senior Activities Fund, Borrow It CT, Sewer District Fund, Capital Reserve Fund, Fleet Reserve Fund, Technology Replacement Fund, Human Services Assistant Fund. So moved.
Second. Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Heed. Any discussion on 2019-290-1? Director Landry, if you have anything you wanted to say about any of these, feel free to just jump right in, but I think we're good otherwise unless you have questions for Director Landry. Okay. Seeing none, we will vote on 2019-2901, Approving FYE 2020 Budgets. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Counselor Parker, 2019-2911, Computation of Tax Rate for General Fund.
Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for FYE 2020 to pay expenses appropriations approved in the general fund budget as adopted by the Town Council. Whereas the Town Council adopted on April 23, a general fund budget providing expenditures, appropriations or expenses totaling $129,62,692 and estimated cash revenues exclusive of FYE 2020 current property taxes totaling $38,764,765. Be it resolved that the tax rate of 24.17 mils is hereby determined as required by Chapter Nine of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total general fund appropriations per budget approved by council, $129,62,692. Less general fund cash receipts exclusive of FYE 2020 current property taxes, $38,764,765. Less the amount to be appropriated from the unassigned fund balance, $1,307,000. Amount to be raised from property taxes, $88,990,927. Amount computed as follows. $88,990,927 divided by the new assessed valuation of the Board of Assessment Adjustments of $3,729,602,117 divided by 98.7% collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equaling 24.17 mil rate. I so move.
Second.
Yes. Moved by Parker and seconded by Baumgartner. Yes.
I just wanted to point out that this is, this is done in case the RTM does not finish their work. It is, because your budget stands that the RTM does not finish their work by May 25th, but if they do, then you get to set this rate again.
Yes, that's right. I think it says tentative in the heading of it. Any other questions for the director? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-2911, Computation of Tax Rate for General Fund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Okay, we are on to the next page of the resolutions now. And we are on 2019-292-1, Computation of Tax Rate for Monford Cove. Counselor Franco, correct?
Yep. Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for FYE 2020 to pay expenses appropriations approved in the Monford Cove Special Taxing District Fund budget as adopted by the Town Council. Whereas the Town Council adopted on April 23, 2019, a Monford Cove District Fund budget providing for expenditures, appropriations, or expenses totaling $21,102 and estimated cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2020, current property taxes totaling zero. Resolve that a tax rate of .34 mils is hereby determined as required by Chapter Nine of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total Monford Cove District Fund appropriations per budget approved by council, $21,102. Less estimated amount to be appropriated by unassigned fund balance of zero. Less cash receipts exclusive of current property taxes, zero. Amount to be raised from property taxes, $21,102. Amount computed as follows. $21,102 divided by net assessed valuation of $62,511,603 after Board of Assessment Adjustments divided by 99.7% collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equals .34 mils. I so move.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion or questions for the Finance Director? Counselor Heed.
Just a question, why is one 99.7% collection rate? One is 98.7, one's 99.6?
Well, when I calculate that, it's based on a three to five-year average and they have different collection rates based on the town versus the sewer district versus Monford Cove.
Correct.
It's based on the average for the years.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on 2019-2921, Computation of Tax Rate for Monford Cove. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We're on to Item 2D, 2019-2931, Computation of Tax Rate for Groton Sewer District. Counselor Heed.
Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for FYE 2020 to pay expenses appropriations approved in the Groton Sewer District Fund budget as adopted by the Town Council. Whereas the Town Council adopted on April 23, 2019, a Groton Sewer District Fund budget providing for expenditures, appropriations or expenses totaling $794,486 and estimated cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2020 current property taxes totaling $14,350. Be it resolved that tax rate of 0.28 mils is hereby determined as required by Chapter Nine of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total Groton Sewer District Fund appropriations per budget approved by council, $794,486. Less estimated amount to be appropriated from unassigned fund balance, $100,000. Less cash receipts exclusive of current property taxes, $14,350. Amount to be raised from property taxes, $780,136. Amount computed as follows. $680,136 divided by net assessed valuation of $2,409,994,773 after Board of Assessment Adjustments and excludes motor vehicles divided by the 99.6% collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equals 0.28 mils. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Franco. Is there a question or discussion on the sewer rate? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-2931, Computation of Tax Rate for Groton Sewer District, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are on to Item 2E, 2019-2721, Setting the RTM Annual Meeting Date on FYE 2020 Budget. This is on page six. And Counselor Opry.
Resolution setting RTM Annual Meeting Date of the FYE 2020 Town Budget. Whereas Section 9.3.1 of the Groton Town Charter requires that the Town Council determine the date for the annual budget meeting of the representative- the date for the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 30th, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the Groton Senior Center, 102 Newtown Road, Groton, Connecticut. I so move.
Second. Moved by Oberg and seconded by Parker. Is any discussion on setting the RTM meeting day? Seeing none, we will vote on 2019-2721, setting the annual meeting date for the RTM. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to item 2F, 2019-2451. This is on page seven, and it is the FYE 2019 fourth quarter transfers. Councilor Atwater.
Resolution for fiscal year ending in 2019, fourth quarter transfers. Whereas the Town Charter provides for supplemental appropriations to adopted budgets and transfers from the contingency fund during the year, and whereas the Town Charter also provides for the transfer of funds from one departmental function to another departmental function during the last three months of the fiscal year, and whereas transfers are necessary and represent unforeseen or unexpected expenditures at the time of the fiscal year ending in 2019 budget was adopted, now therefore be it resolved that transfers totaling $10,159 be transferred from contingency account number 1074 to the following general fund departments or functions. Legislative policy, account number 10018-5290, $2,285. Legal fees and add for charter revision commission. And then the second one is the Groton Long Point, account number 109125220. These are streetlights additional costs, $442. And the third is the City of Groton, account number 109045220, for streetlights additional costs, $7,400, sorry, and $32. And further resolved that transfers totaling $116,475 be transferred from contingency account number 1074 to the following general fund departments/function and referred to the RTM for approval. Voter registration, account number 10033-5103, is a two referendum cost not included in the budget for a total of $24,980. Human resources, account number 10122-5290, costs associated with retirement plan changes in the amount of $11,400. Finance, account number 10131-5109, retirement of a long-term employee, $27,883. Public works, account number 10359-5101, salary for a landfill operator added to the budget of $30,212. And the library fund, account number 106305109, retirement of a long-term employee, $22,000. I so move.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Schmidt. Director Landry, did you wish to address any of these?
I don't have anything to add from the town meeting. If you have questions.
All right, anyone have questions for the Finance Director? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on 2019-245, fourth quarter transfers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And we are on to item 2G, 2019-2761, Historic Documents Preservation Grant. Councilor Schmidt.
A resolution authorizing the Town Manager to execute and deliver a contract for an Historic Documents Preservation Grant. Whereas the Town of Groton will benefit by the continuance of the Historic Document Preservation Program, which will be enabled and enhanced by grant funding. Now therefore be it resolved that John Burke, Town Manager of the Town of Groton, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of this municipality, a contract with the Connecticut State Library for an Historic Documents Preservation Grant. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Atwater. Any discussion or questions for the manager or the clerk? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-276, Historic Documents Preservation Grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Atwater, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 7:16. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we are back into Committee of the Whole at 7:16, and we are on to item 5G, which is on page 22. And this is the patrol officer, and I don't remember where we left off, so we'll start back at Councilor Baumgartner. On page 22, Chief Basara, always here, good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
No formal action is required, but they're just looking for consensus for us on this, so we don't have to go to Councilor Baumgartner, I apologize. Chief Basara, tell us about the position, please.
Yes, I'm here before you to ask for your concurrence that we hire for a vacant patrol officer position. We currently have two, on this year's budget, two vacancies in our patrol structure. That results from one individual that was recently promoted to the rank of detective. We also have a vacancy within the patrol rank itself. So currently, we have two lists that we're operating off of. We have a certified list, which means an officer that may want to leave another community and come and work here. We do have a couple of eligible candidates that we've looked at there, but we've also got a new hire list. The next training academy class that the state puts on will be in July, so I want to make sure that we're poised to have someone in the pipeline, either a new hire right off the street, or someone who is already a qualified police officer in Connecticut.
Are there questions for the Chief? Councilor Franco.
I would like to ask John Burke, we had discussed this during budgets about the police having to come to us to fulfill a vacant position. Is there a good time that we can bring this for discussion?
There's two options, you could bring it up at some point, well, are you talking just this or generally? I put something to the Council that once the resolution lapses at the end of June, that I'd rather not see that resolution go back into effect.
And that pertains to all departments?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay, is there a concurrence to consensus to authorize the Chief to fill the positions?
Definitely.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening.
Thank you, too. We are on to 5H, and let me just take a quick look here. We do have a motion on this one. So we are on 2019-268, Libraries Lead with Digital Skills Grant Program, on page 23. Councilor Baumgartner, would you read the resolution, please, for us on page 24?
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to authorize the Town Manager or his designee to apply for and execute grant funding in the amount of $1,000 from the Public Library Association and Google. So moved.
Second. Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Parker. Director Mueller is here with us, would you like to tell us about the motion?
I would love to. Connecticut Public Libraries were recently invited to apply for the Libraries Lead with Digital Skills Grant, which is an initiative of the American Library Association and sponsored by Google. The intent of this grant funding is to enhance or expand on library programs geared to assist job seekers grow their technology skills and advance their careers. The library would use this funding of $1,000 to enhance our already active weekly job club and help us host additional courses on resume building, job searching using Google's free technology resources. We are also interested in exploring ways to use these digital tools and curriculum outside the library through events like the day's semi-annual job fairs and with collaboration with the local high schools. We hope you consider this request, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do you have questions for Director Mueller?
Give you all that with $1,000?
Well, you know, what's really interesting is our job club has been really amazing. I mean, we service anywhere weekly, we could have five to six people, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you have one person facilitating all of those, as well as in, we ask people if they would like to send their resumes over and review them, we do that as well. And we've gotten amazing response at any of the job fairs that we've been doing. Last year, we received at least 300 to 500 people walking through the job fair at the Mystic Marriott, actually, and we were doing the resume workshops there, and we had students there from the local high school, as well as other people that were very interested to learn about, you know, how to do workforce development and job seeking skills, so.
There was just one yesterday, correct?
Yes, there was.
Thank you.
We were there, and it was, it was, it was good last, the fall one is much bigger, the spring is a little, little smaller, but still definitely worthwhile.
Very good. Any questions?
I'm just curious, is the base involved in these, with people that are coming out of the service?
You mean for the, the job fairs or just at the workforce development at the library? At the job fairs, I don't believe so. EB is definitely represented, but I'm not sure about the Navy.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions, we will vote on 2019-268, Libraries Lead with Digital Skills Grant Program. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Is there another one? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we are now on to 2019-280, Fourth of July Parade Route Change. And is there a motion? Let me see, there is a motion, Councilor Parker.
A motion to recommend a resolution approving the proposed change in parade route and associated post-parade activities. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. Mr. Lockett is here, hello, would you like to introduce your work?
Yes, thank you. I'm Jerry Lockett, I'm the manager of Red Services, and next to me is Jessica Patterson. She is our community outreach coordinator. One of the many duties that she's assigned is working with other organizations in the community to plan large community events. So Fourth of July Parade being a large event, she's here to offer any answers to any questions you might have on that account. Madam Mayor, if I can hand out some maps that might be helpful for folks?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, sir. Do you have an extra for the records? Or if Mr. Burke can give his for the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, the reason we're here is to, is to ask for the Council's, I guess, consensus and approval of changing the Fourth of July Parade Route. The parade is going to be celebrating its 40th anniversary here in town this year. And part of the Great Blue Study that we had on the quality of life in town was that this parade is actually one of the higher-ranked events in town. People say they, they want large community events, and they say they appreciate this event. That being said, we, there are some, some serious issues that we've kind of developed over time. The parade at one time, 15 years ago or so, was 120 elements in the parade. We're currently at about 60. So the participation in the parade is going down, and the feel for the parade is not kind of what we, we hoped that it would be. We're looking for a large community celebration where people in town are involved with each other, interacting with each other, and, and, you know, kind of making that atmosphere. I know many of you were at the Mystic Irish Parade, I recently was at myself, and you know that when you're going through downtown Mystic, and there's, there's crowds of people that are compressed into a smaller area, the energy level kind of rises, and it becomes more of a celebratory atmosphere, and, and people engaging with each other and making it a more vibrant event. So with that in mind, plus the fact that we've had issues over the, over the last several years, and the chief of police just walked out the door, but one of the issues that we have with the current parade route is it's two miles long, and it goes from Paquannic Plains Park all the way down to the Groton Shopping Plaza, about two miles. All of those intersections along that route, along Route 1, are manned by police officers. Lot of overtime, lot of tax dollars going in to pay those expenses for those officers to, to make the route as safe as we can. And beyond that, even the businesses in, in the Groton Shopping Plaza area are, lots of times, they're negatively affected, frankly, because traffic stops for a couple of hours while the parade goes by, and, and, you know, I'm as certain as the Fourth of July comes every year, I'm certain that my phone's going to ring with somebody who was negatively impacted by the parade and asking, why do we do that there? So those are a couple more issues that we're trying to solve, and so the proposed route that we're talking about doing goes from Town Hall and actually reverses direction on US Route 1 and goes to Paquannic Plains Park. The hope that we have is that we have a lineup location that we've used for the Holiday Lights Parade successfully in the past that we can use to line up vehicles and whatnot. We can get on Route 1 for about three-quarters of a mile, travel down, compress the people that are watching the parade into a more residential area that's, that's in kind of a recognizable community part of town with the parks and the library and the senior center and Town Hall and Sutton Park and Paquannic Plains Park, Claude Chester School in that area. And at the end of the parade, people end up at Paquannic Plains Park area, and we can have a large kind of community event there where people can bring their yard games out and have a, a nice time with, with their fellow neighbors. That's, that's kind of the vision that we have, and I guess I'm here to answer any questions about that and hopefully get your consensus that that is a good idea for, for all the reasons, and I hope that map, if you have any questions on the map that I gave you about that shows the old route and where the new route is, we're happy to answer any questions.
I never realized how long the old route was until I see it on paper like this.
Yeah, it's a little over two miles.
All right.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Lockett? Councilor Oberg.
Of course, I don't like the shopping route. I, I feel the energy is throughout that route, having been part of it for many years. I'm just wondering if maybe we couldn't try going the opposite way with the same route to see how effective it is when we do end at the park. I think ending at the park is a wonderful idea. Ending at Drauzdeck Drive is, is not conducive to anything going on afterwards, but I think to try going the reversed way and see how that works, and then maybe another year if you feel it needs to be shortened, but I, I would not be in favor of doing this. I think it's too short. There's many, many, many people that it's very convenient for them to go into the shopping centers and park, and I think you get more seniors out that way, or people with families that need more space than you would in the area that you're trying to put it in. May I ask another question?
Yes.
The other question I have is, how much community involvement do you have in it now?
In what way? In terms of participants?
In planning the parade, participating in the parade?
In terms of planning the parade, the, the planning of the parade for the Fourth of July is, is really a staff exercise in parks and recreation. That's, that's really the only involvement in the, in the planning of it. In terms of participation, participation is about, you know, we're hoping to actually increase participation this year, that's one of the reasons Jessica is here, we're hoping to increase participation in the parade. In past year, last year, I think we had 60, 65 groups in the parade. I would hope that there are more groups than that involved this year, and, but, you know, that's, that's youth sports organizations, veteran organizations, people from the subbase, VIPs from.
I'm sorry, I don't think I said my question just the right way. What I was trying to get at, with the Irish Parade, there is so much involvement in it from the community, you know, and they have dinners before, they have dinners afterwards, they- they have, you know, major awards, they have, but it's, it's a community event planning it. And, and I think that if we could perhaps make this into more of a community involved prior to the parade, we might see some of the energy that you do see at the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I'd like to see an increase in that, you know, if, if it could be, with, with this going the other way and see how that was to work. But I, I would not be in favor at all of, of this shortened portion. I understand the expenses of the police and so forth, but I think you'd lose a lot of people that are pretty used to that parade coming through town.
Can I ask a question with regard to, um, what Councilor Ober was saying? As far as ending it at Paquonic Plains, I think that's a good idea to end it there. Will there be organized activities there that the town is having and could you speak to that, please?
Yeah, I think, uh, the initial idea is to have actually people to kind of bring their own, uh, kind of yard game activities like, uh, cornhole or, um, frisbees or, you know, um, just yard game type things and, and ask people to bring their own. We'll certainly have, uh, some parts and rec equipment there, but, um, mostly we're, we're hoping that people will kind of, you know, make it like a backyard kind of, uh, picniki, just get-together, uh, theme there where people bring their own entertainment and, you know, we'll probably invite some, um, food vendors and, and I, I expect that there would be some people that were selling novelties or people interested in that type of thing at the park as well. But, um, and those, those people I would expect would show up to something like that.
Are there other questions? Councilor Franco.
I also have a concern with this. I think our community has had this Fourth of July Parade. I mean, I can remember it being a child, sitting out there, watching it go by in the same type of route. My question is, though, just from my guess, I would think from the Ring Drive area to down to Buddington Road area, you're basically having people walk to the street and then sitting out there with their own chairs or whatever. They're not actually driving, 'cause I don't know how you're gonna pull all the people that you have from Buddington Road down to Drauzdick Drive who park in all those parking lots from all the businesses squeezed into such a small area. That really concerns me.
Yeah, I think, um, in terms of parking, the, the places where people would park, I think, uh, the Midway Oval neighborhood, the Ring Drive neighborhood, um, the library, the senior center, um, there are, there's parking at Town Hall, there's parking, um, near the, um, the Dairy Queen, there's, uh, Paquonic Plains Park parking, there's Claude Chester School parking and Sutton Park as well. So those would be probably the primary places, I think, that people would, would be parking for this.
So just to reiterate, I think that the downtown Groton area there with all the massive amounts of parking that I see that are pretty full on that day, you're trying to squeeze them into a neighborhood area. And I'd really just, I personally don't think that's a great idea. And I really think that, I know from Paquonic Bridge, those people just walk and they walk to Route One and they just set up. They don't have to drive anywhere and that's, and you're gonna create a lot of, a lot more issues down in that area with a lot of people trying to squeeze into that road. And I understand trying to create the excitement and the vibe. Do you know how, how long is the, since you've brought it up, the Mystic, uh, St. Patrick's Day Parade, how long is that route?
I, I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Councilor Atwater.
It's just over a mile.
Thank you.
All right. So I just think this is something that's important to the community and I don't think we should take it away from them because, I mean, they do find it to be, you may have less people showing up to march in your parade, but I think the people are sitting up on the streets about the same. Are you seeing any difference there?
Well, there are several reasons why we're, we're suggesting this and, and yeah, there, there are lots of issues and we, we've talked about a few, but, um, people finding their way to the event, I think that's going to, that's gonna happen. You know, it's parking in downtown Mystic for that parade is, is, you know, incredibly tough, but, you know, it, it happens. People, you know, if there's a place that people want to go, they'll find their ways to get there. You know, there are, there are times in, in the parade on a two-mile, um, parade route in the middle of the heat and, and what could be very hot days. I mean, there are people that have a hard time marching that distance. There are, um, big gaps in the parade, you know, it gets bunched up and then it gets stretched out and there are people that, you know, is the parade over, is it not over? You know, there are, there are just things that kind of take away from the, the ambiance and, and frankly, I, I don't really argue with, you know, much of what you say. There are, there is a lot of parking down at the Groton Shopping Plaza and, and Big Y and whatnot. That is very convenient for some people and it creates problems for others, but, you know, so I, I don't, we're here just to, to, to give you our best recommendation for what we think is, is going to make this event more, um, enjoyable for the community and, and if you agree, great. If you don't agree, then great and we'll, we'll do, we'll do what we have to do to, to make it as good as we can.
And just a final thought is I do agree with Counselor Obrey that there is a different type of involvement and community involvement, I think, between the two different parades when you compare them. So maybe those things could be worked on. I think this is more of like the town's putting it on and the other one's more of a community is putting it on type of atmosphere.
That's absolutely correct.
If we could try and get more of the community atmosphere, that would be great.
Councilor Parker.
Um, in regards to what you mentioned about the budget for the PD, I believe that's already incorporated in their budget as having part of parades and stuff, which we've authorized for them to have. So I'm not concerned about that so much. Public safety has to be out there for parades anyways, any type of event, they're out there. Fireworks, everything else. To the route, I understand what you're saying, but people park on every end, not just Claude Chester, 'cause I've watched them park Claude Chester, the library, and you've got people coming from out of town to come watch these parades. So we're basically gonna tell all those people coming in from out of town, families are coming in from out of town, to go and park down to a neighborhood that may get a ticket because families aren't, people can't park in front of their own family's home. Two, it's better stretched going up than going down because that means you're only giving it to half of the community. This is like going across town that everybody gets a chance to see. And I agree with Counselor Obrey and Counselor Franco that I, I think you're taking away a little bit from the community doing it that way and shortening it and not, and the end, I get where you wanna have a picnic at the end, but most people wanna watch the parade and then go home to their families. So I don't know if a lot of them are gonna stay at the park and have the whole entire family go over there to have a picnic and stuff instead of going home and having their own event at home. Just a thought.
Councilor Hayden and Atwater.
I absolutely like the idea and, um, I'll tell you why. Because to your point, when we're walking in the parade, there's a big section between the Town Hall and, um, really Buddington Road where there's almost nobody there, are a handful of people there and that's where the, the lines get really stretched out and you end up seeing the fire truck like two hundred feet in front of you instead of fifty feet in front of you. And I love the idea of ending it at the park because there's a potential where maybe the first year it's bring your own entertainment, but in the future, maybe you have the bands. We were talking about, uh, music across Groton or whatever that group was, you know, we could have different local bands, uh, that could show up, barbecue, something, it could be fun. Um, that being said, um, the biggest part of the parade, the biggest concentration of people is always down at the other end towards the Gro- Groton Shopping Plaza, I think because of the parking, but we're overlooking something. We've got all this parking over here at Grass O' Tech, we'll have more parking up towards the new middle school, uh, we can run shuttles up and down from there. I, I think it's a great idea and I would support it, but I might suggest starting at Buddington Road instead of at the Town Hall or maybe at, um, the Groton Utilities, um, just spread it out a little bit. 'Cause this, you're proposing basically one mile, so to shorten it from two to just one.
Councilor Atwater.
I think you all know me for one going out and doing measurements, but the actual distance when you leave the Town Hall parking lot to the traffic light to turn into Paquonic Plains Park is a half mile. And I just am concerned that you're taking a two-mile stretch and stretching it into a half mile. And, and I, the other thing I'd like to mention, and maybe it's just 'cause I'm an old veteran or something, but when you talk about the excitement or the dynamics of the, the Irish Parade, I like to think of this one as being a little more solemn and it's a little more tribute to the, the country and, and our, our being here and therefore I don't quite see the need for, for the big excitement and so forth, but that's just my personal opinion.
Councilor Schmidt and then Obrey.
I just feel that it would cause a great deal of confusion. Uh, people are used to having this parade. They do come from out of town, as, um, as Counselor Parker said, and they will just be shocked when they sit down in front of Groton Plaza and nobody comes and there's not gonna be anybody there but, but the parked cars. I think it would be probably a very difficult thing to start and it's very short. I think that, um, it would be a detriment to the community rather than a plus.
Counselor Obrey.
Um, I think that we have quite a few things in the town of Groton that is a tribute to our people that have served and, uh, I look at the Fourth of July of more of a celebration of our freedom. And I realize it's because of people that have given that we have that freedom, but it's still a celebration. And, um, I, I'd like to keep it that way. What I'm talking about is if you have more people involved, more people are talking to their groups or whatever it might be, you're gonna have more of an interest. And I think if that happens, then you have a better turnout. And I'd be happy to put together a group that will keep the parade together. This is something you and I have talked about a lot of times, Jerry, and I'll be happy to work with you to have people walkie-talkies to say to them, "Slow down, speed up, move on," whatever it takes so that we can keep the parade together. And last time you didn't go with my idea, you said to me later, I should've listened to you. So here we are.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, um, Ms. Patterson like to say anything about this? What is your, your take on this as this being your field of activities?
So, um, thank you first, uh, also thank you for letting me join tonight. This didn't really come from us. It came from the community. It came from people wanting that, that feeling of energy, that feeling of excitement. And I think part of the role that we have and the responsibility and kind of the privilege, because I literally get to go out and talk to people all the time and find out, what is it that you love about living here? Like, why do you stay here? And if you're new, like, why did you move here? And the big thing is, we have the sense of family and we have the sense of patriotism. Um, and the, kind of the thought was, how do we really showcase that? Like, how do we make it more impactful? How do we make it more of a celebration of where we live, who we are, and making an opportunity to be able to meet our neighbors? Because that's kind of the thing, right, is how do you meet people as an adult? You go out and you do stuff, you do your recreations, you go to senior center, you do whatever, but it, it gives us an opportunity to crunch it down a little bit, to see if we can make that more of kind of something that people go home and talk about in a good way, ideally, right? Knock on wood. So, yeah, I mean, we, we come here requesting that it be shortened, we come here saying, "Hey, we wanna change the direction, we wanna make it a party too." Um, but we didn't really come up with that. We're just here kind of as the messengers. Um, but, I mean, whatever ultimately is decided, we're, we're gonna make it work and I'm excited to be part of that.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Burke, did you want? Councilor Parker and then Franco.
By shortening the route, how many people do you think can get through that? Because if you start from, you're saying start from the Town Hall and go down, how many people are gonna be going down through the parade route? Are you still gonna have sixty people? Because then we're all condensed in and nobody's gonna be able to see what everybody's doing. So.
The, yeah, the, I think that the number of people or elements or groups that are involved in the parade, I would hope are gonna be equal to or greater than we have in the past. So, um, in terms of, you know, lining them up and the logistics of that is, you know, I don't know if that's what you're talking about or, or all the people. Yeah, the logistics of doing that are, are probably the easiest part of it. We have an existing, we've used industrial drive, uh, at the end of Depot Road to line up many parades in the past. So that, that location is available and, and, and works well.
But usually that's for your floats, correct?
Correct.
Floats come out?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and we would have probably marchers lining up at Town Hall. And from there, they, they march down to, uh, Paquonic Plains Park in, in a, in a, you know, in a much shorter route as Counselor Atwater has said. And, you know, and then it just kind of, you know, it's, it's not a, a two-hour parade, it becomes a hour-long or forty-five-minute kind of the marching part of it, but then, then there's a, you know, an additional kind of, um, extended celebration at, at the park, uh, for, for people in the parade and for, you know, the spectators of the parade.
All right. So logistically thinking, you have all the marches, the floats, the marches go down. Are they all gonna have to go up and around to Grass O' Tech to come back down and go out the way? How are you gonna have that end?
No, no, I think at the, at the end of the parade, at, at Ring Drive, people would either, people that are in the parade would either choose at that point, "I want to, um, join the festivities at Paquonic Plains Park" or "I just wanna go home." So if you wanna go home, just keep going straight up, uh, the hill and, you know, Route One and, and, and you're out of there. If you wanna stay around, you could either go into, you know, the Grass O' Tech, you know, turn right into Grass O' Tech or the Sutton Park parking lot, you know, um, park your float, walk over to the Paquonic Plains Park and, and be a part of the activities.
But you have many people that park at Sutton. Okay. The other thing is, so we're asking all the families to potentially go down there, logistically after the parade, to try to get them all down to the end, to Paquonic Plains, basically. So you have all the families that are crunched in to walk down to that part of the.
I, I would hope that most of the people actually viewing the parade would be in the Paquonic Bridge, or Paquonic Bridge neighborhood, right where Paquonic Plains Park is. I would hope that most people would watch the parade from right around that area. So they're already in that area, they're not trying to move, the, the parade moves down the street, they end at that location and most of the spectators are already in that location, putting everybody in, together in a, in the smaller area.
Um, Councilor Franco and then Bumgarner.
Sorry, we've done some questions. I still have more. So if it's going to be hot and you're concerned about people even walking, I mean, my concern is you have people even watching the parade, they're gonna have to walk to get to, from their parking spot to the parade, 'cause they're not gonna be able to park just in a parking lot and walk just a few feet and sit on the curb. That's another concern of just the spectators not being able to get close parking as well. Um, and you stated that you didn't, you didn't choose this, you're just the messenger, then who did choose this?
Well, I guess, uh, in, in answer to that, people are telling us, um, in the past, like I mentioned, the phone calls I get of people that are frustrated about the traffic down at, at, in the shopping plaza. I, I get a number of complaints from people that are actually in the parade that are marching two miles, um, for members of their groups, pipe and drum corps and things like that. It's kind of a, it's a grueling exercise for those people in those bands and things like that. And it actually prevents people from saying yes to participating in the parade.
So it's the participants, it's not the people viewing the parade? It's the per.
Correct. And, and the people in the parade and as, as Counselor Heed mentioned, when people are walking in the parade, you're in places where you're walking down the street and there aren't any spectators and you're just trying, trying to get to the next spot where you see a spectator along the road, you know? So, yes, there are large num, larger numbers of spectators in the Groton Shopping Plaza area currently, but there are large sections of, um, like a couple of blocks there where you won't see really any spectators. So, you know, in the, in the parade, as people are marching in the parade, they're just, you know, kind of putting their time in to get through that, that dry stretch until they get to a, an area of more spectators.
I don't think it's quite that dry. I didn't, it wasn't that.
It's dry, there'll, there'll be one kid there and everybody throws candy at the kid and you get to the end and there, you have no candy left.
Do you have other questions?
So, I do.
Okay.
So I think also, we got rid of the holiday parade, basically, and now we're having a celebration at the library now instead of having the holiday parade. Is that correct?
That's, yeah, that's a, that's a, uh, decision by the, the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce. That's, that's who, we, we work with them on that event, yes. The, they are not, no longer doing the parade. I think there is, uh, potentially some interest in the community for doing the Holiday Lights Parade and, and if that were to come to pass, we would certainly be a part of that operation as well if, if, if we were asked to be.
Okay. And then, so I think we took a holiday parade away and then we shortened up another parade that we have, I think we're just really taking, I understand.
I think we're just really taking, I understand you think you're going to pack everybody into one small area, but I think you're going to have a lot of people that just won't even bother coming. I think that's, it's going to, and they're going to be, the complaints you're getting about the parade, you might get twice as many about you changing the parade. That's my perspective. And then I would have no problem with you turning it around and having it going to the park. And I do believe that a celebration afterwards, or even going back to the businesses and trying to get businesses involved where in Mystic, like, they put out a tent and they have live bands and the rest, and the thing with Mystic is they have a lot of restaurants. They have a lot of food and entertainment. When you get down to the Groton side, we're, they have to have those things. That's what's going to get people excited and then to stay. You're going to have to have music and entertainment. I don't think just bringing some lawn games yourself is going to really cut it at the end and like bring your own, bring your own fun to the end is really what's going to excite people. That's just my perspective. I think Mystic creates an atmosphere and if Groton wants to do that, they have to create an atmosphere and get maybe businesses involved in doing such things. I mean, there are restaurants and bars down there and they can join in and have festivities that day as well when it stops, the parade goes by. So, it's my two cents.
Counselor Baumgartner and then Ober.
I know Counselor Schmidt would agree with me in saying that the parade's not long enough. But nonetheless, I've always enjoyed, you know, marching in this parade. Did the 2016 route when it was shortened and I, it was definitely a very quick, quick event and just heard from folks afterwards and it was explained in the packet here, but a lot of folks in Paquonic Bridge were, weren't too happy with the fact that, you know, they felt excluded. So, nonetheless, I think it, you know, the solution you've outlined is an innovative approach, though I would certainly align my marks with, you know, my colleagues in that, you know, I think the current length is sufficient and if we can kind of continue to make it work, I think we should. But just to kind of focus in on that picnic idea, which I think is a phenomenal idea, you know, have there been any thoughts to maybe, you know, if we were to take that approach to, you know, say invite food carts or, you know, other vendors that may want to kind of park out in front of the park there and then, you know, folks in order there and kind of congregate afterwards? And secondly, I know there are a lot of parades and festivals throughout the state that offer kind of beer gardens or beer tents and, you know, we were about to, you know, have a grand opening for a brewery and Outer Light has been very, very successful here in Groton. So, you know, I know there could be an appetite for, you know, or a thirst for, you know, perhaps having a tent and kind of, you know, I don't know what the, bureaucratically what it would take to, you know, investigate as to whether or not that'd be possible, but I, you know, as long as obviously folks are responsible, you know, I think there would be interest there within the community. So, maybe I speak to that and thank you for what you do.
Counselor Ober.
What were you, what was your plan with the buses?
The buses?
Yes.
If anybody, it's, it would be like we would do in the, in the current route. We typically bus people from the end of the parade route to the beginning of the parade route before the parade, and then when they end, they end close to where their cars are parked. So, that would be the same. If anybody needed to, that wanted to go park their car in the area of Paquonic Plains Park or Sutton Park or Grasso Tech or Clodchester School, you know, if they needed a bus ride for some reason to go down to the beginning of the parade route, we would provide that.
You realize by doing that, you'd be taking away some of the parking you're talking about. But I just want to say, Jerry, I know you do a very good job and you work very hard at these things and I greatly appreciate all the help you've been over the years when I was involved in the parades. But I really think this time, we should try and go in the other way, but keep the route the way it is. And then perhaps from that, we'll see something that we could do a little differently in the future. But I think we need to take a couple steps.
So, and maybe, maybe I can help you here. What we need to know, and as Jessica mentioned, whatever it is that, you know, that the council wants, we'll work to provide that. So, you know, I guess what we need here, we've, we've heard from the people in the parade, we've heard from businesses, we've heard from people that are impacted negatively, we've heard from the, you know, budgetary aspects and we've come up with what we think is a, is a plan here. If that's not what the council wants, that's fine, but we just need to know what it is that you would like us to pursue. So, that's, that's, you know, to cut to the chase, what is it, is there consensus on the council of what you would like us to do? Or is it something that we just say we're going to do as we've always done in the past and try to make that work the best we can?
So, I have a couple of questions. First of all, you said you had talked to businesses. So, when you're speaking of that, you're talking about the people in the Groton Shopping Plaza?
We've heard from, it's mostly people going to the businesses. The, the customers of those businesses who are impacted by the traffic flow or, you know, they go down to the store and then they can't get home because there's a parade going by and they get stuck. And I get back to my office and I've got four angry voicemails from people who are somehow negatively impacted. So, that's, that's really where we're hearing that.
So, it's the customers that are complaining that they can't access the businesses in town?
Correct.
Okay. The second thing is, have you talked to, if we're reversing this, you're not counting on parking at Grasso, are you? Because we've got that construction going and I don't know that you're going to be able to get on site. We're not even going to be able to get on site.
Correct. That would be something we would work out. If Grasso Tech isn't available, we would be using Sutton Park and the back part of Sutton Park and the neighborhoods and whatnot.
So, as Counselor Ober was suggesting, if we just reversed it, do you think, what kind of issues would that raise? Would that work okay if we started at, you know, the post office plaza and you ran it to Paquonic Plains but kept the length the same this year? Do you foresee problems doing that?
I think we're going to end up with similar problems with, with gaps in the parade or bunches or the accordion effect or whatever we call that.
No gaps.
I know, so I think we're going to end up with that and I think we'll still be impacting the businesses in the Groton Shopping Plaza for a different period of time. It will be a little bit earlier than it was before, that it was the end of the parade route, if it's the beginning. The time of impact would be a little bit earlier in the day rather than later in the day. But I think the people that were watching the parade from the Groton Shopping Plaza area, I don't think it's realistic to expect that those people would somehow make it to Paquonic Plains at the end of the parade because there's a parade in front of them, there's no way to really get there. So, could it be done? Yes, it can be done. What the net effect of that is, is, you know, I guess it's kind of speculation on our part or on anybody's part at this point.
Okay. Everybody, I think, has had a chance to talk. Are there any other questions or does anybody want to speak again?
You want a motion on the floor?
There is a motion on the floor.
Well, I think it was pretty limited if I remember.
So, the motion is to approve the proposed changes. If we do not approve the proposed changes, you'll work with the parade in the same format that it was last year, correct?
That unless the council makes another motion and approves something different, yes.
So, then I'm going to throw out to the rest of the council, if you're, I'm getting that many of you are not content with the change, would you like time to come up with an alternative to report back to Mr. Locken? Or do you just want to veto this as it is? I mean, do you, do you want to really think about this and get people together or you just want to vote it down tonight?
I think it should be a two-step process. I would, I would say tonight that I would propose that the only thing that we would approve is a change on the route of the direction to try that. And then I think we should talk about what we could do to make it a little bit better.
Do we, Mr. Burt, would it work if we held off on this till our next cow?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. How would that work? Everybody okay if we hold off on a vote on this till the next cow? Anybody want to make a motion to postpone to the next cow? Go ahead.
If we wait till the next cow, that would be May 15th to 20th. So, I mean, is it, is it going to then give us time to then make the motion in council in June to do this in July?
Mr. Locken? How much time do you need?
The Fourth of July parade has perennially been a really tough event to do because it happens three days after the fiscal year. That's been a, one of the barriers, kind of behind-the-scenes barriers that we've had with the parade. It goes into, I really can't make agreements with people. We pay people to be in the parade, for example. I can't enter into those agreements to pay people into the parade until the RTM really kind of acts on our budget and I'm assured that we have those funds available. That typically happens at the end of May and that really puts us in a bit of a pickle and that just, I don't know that that changes, you know, things. It's, it's, it's a hard thing for us to do in a, in a small amount of time anyway. I think the comments of getting, you know, a larger community effort involved and involving perhaps businesses or civic-minded citizens or whatever involved in the process of planning the parade, I think are absolutely 100% on target and that's something that we haven't done in the past. It really is kind of a matter of, of resources. A lot of times it's easier from a staff standpoint to, you know, to just go ahead and, and plan events without trying to hurt the, you know, all these disparate voices. But I think that the end result, when you do those kinds of things, is, is a parade like the Mystic Outreach Parade. That is a quality event that, that has more to offer. So, that's certainly something I think we'll take to heart and we'll make every effort to do that. Realistically, though, I don't think that's, that's something that can probably happen effectively between now and July 1. So, I guess, I think if that's where the council would like to go, I think a much better timeframe to do something really significant then would be in 2020, you know, the next parade, the 41st parade rather than the 40th.
Correct. So, I was going to suggest that, given what you were just saying, that why don't, if the majority of you are opposed to this, then we just veto this, move ahead with the parade as it is for one more year. That would give the park staff time to work together with you or whatever community members you would like and to plan something different for next year. I agree.
Counselor Ober.
I don't know how you would do something like this, but it seems to me like it might be good if we could change it, that when we're doing our budget, we're doing it a year ahead so that an activity like this could be paid for so they don't have to be waiting till the end. You following what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't know logistically whether Charter would allow for that.
Right, you can't do that.
Yeah, the, yeah, the event actually happens, I think Cindy Landry isn't here right now.
Right, that's what I was looking for, like, she's be cringing back there. Okay, so then...
There's going to be some way to do it.
So, it seems like everyone's had a chance to speak multiple times, so we will vote on 2019-280 Fourth of July Parade Route Changes. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, just say aye. No, I'm saying no. Any abstentions? Okay. So, the motion fails, so you don't get to change parade route this year.
We're still happy.
But thank you very much. At least you know what they want now, right? Thank you for coming out and it was nice to meet you. Okay, I have no idea where we are. That was Parker. So, we are on to Franco. So, we are on 2019-267 Tax Increment Financing TIP Advisory Committee on Page 28. The resolution is on Page 29, Counselor Franco.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution to appoint the Town of Groton Economic Development Commission as the town's TIF advisory committee.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Mr. Reiner.
Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Here before you tonight, as we're moving forward to, I think, a major milestone with our tax increment financing program, both the policy and the master plan, we were taking a step back and looking at the use that we've had with our TIF advisory group, which has done a great job helping us get tax increment financing off the ground, moving along and moving ahead. When we first started down the road of tax increment financing, we knew we wanted to have a diverse group of people assist us in some type of advisory role capacity to assist with public outreach, bounce ideas off of them, and have it as a mix of members of our boards and commissions as well as some members of the public. A lot of other municipalities just took that role as their economic development commission, but we initially looked at this, let's have something separate and also utilize our economic development commission. As we're moving forward with this process, the role of the TIF advisory committee in its current state is probably lessening and lessening and I see as the future goes on, the role of our economic development commission being a little bit more critical. So, at this time, we've also spoke to the economic development commission about this possible change and they were in favor of and supportive of becoming the TIF advisory committee. The existing TIF advisory committee was just a temporary committee created by a previous council.
Thank you. Do you have questions for Mr. Reiner? Counselor Heed.
So, as I understand it, it will be strictly the economic development commission, not one or two members of the council, one member, okay.
Correct. And again, the council still approves all changes to TIF policies and master plans. The planning, soon-to-be Planning and Zoning Commission also reviews all of our TIF master plan for consistency with the Plan of Conservation and Development. So, initially there was, I think also, this was an opportunity to educate the council, the boards and the commissions, our EDC and the public about what TIF was.
Any questions? Okay. Do you have a question?
Yes, I just want to clarify. So, you're going to get rid of the TIF advisory committee and you're going to replace it with the town's economic development commission to take on that role as the advisory, right?
Correct. And right now already through our processes, everything that starts at the TIF advisory committee then has to go to the town's economic development commission before it moves up. So, we're just taking one step out of the process and utilizing the EDC for that role moving forward.
Any other questions for Mr. Reiner? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on 2019-267 Tax Increment Financing Advisory Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Reiner, I had a request from Mr. Pritchard to set up a meeting and I forgot to mention it earlier. He would like a meeting of the Planning Commission, the Zoning Commission and the Town Council perhaps.
Okay.
So, if you could talk to Mr. Burt about that at some point. We had the discussion today, the groundbreaking. Thank you very much.
I'm about to go talk to Mr. Pritchard at the Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. 5K, 2019-279 Economic Assistance Fund Award, 5 Water Street, SIFT Bake Shop, and this is on Page 30. Counselor Heed votes.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving a grant award of $28,300 to SIFT Bake Shop for site work, utility upgrade and storm water system upgrade costs to be paid on a reimbursement basis contingent on the posting of a sign indicating the project is supported by Town of Groton Economic Assistance Fund and after satisfying infrastructure construction specifications and providing proof of payment related costs, I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed and seconded by Franco. Mr. Brock.
Paige Brock, Town of Groton Economic and Community Development Manager. We have two requests this evening. I'll be taking them in the order if they're on the agenda. Just a little bit of backdrop, we've had several of these requests from the Economic Assistance Fund come before you in the past and just a quick overview, we did revise the guidelines a couple of years ago and it added more flexibility for these development projects to come forward. The idea is to try to help properties upgrade their infrastructure. Although we have individual businesses that may come forward and request the funds, the long-term goal is really to allocate public funding to upgrade the properties in perpetuity. So, in the event that a business in future years were to change hands, maybe the building is a new use in the future, it would benefit us and our grand list to have upgrades with public access, water, sewer, electric, gas, et cetera. So, that's, that's why the program exists. Specific to the first request, 5 Water Street, which is for SIFT Bakery, we do have a fair, we have a standard format that we go through. Some of this will be a little dry. I'll try to move it along. It does... It does mimic much of what you have for you. The recommended award or grant is $28,300. That is done on a reimbursement basis. The SIFT Bakery, as you know, is a, is a really a success story, local success story, and to some degree, national in receiving Best Baker Award on the Food Network. As a result of that success, they are desiring to expand. I believe you've seen the activity underway. In terms of the infrastructure, they've been in discussions with us since late 2018 in trying to package this request. We are recommending a grant award based on three-phase electrical upgrades, stormwater system and also roadway and sidewalk improvements. The total project cost for the overall project is $700,000. It's important to realize that the larger scale of the project relative to the ask, post-improvement assessed value will double from its current amount to over $1 million and post-improvement annual tax estimates will be roughly $29,000 annually. Our guidelines within the Economic Assistance Fund cap the maximum award to be twice the post-improved annual taxes. So that's why we go through that calculation. So the maximum that would have been theoretically allowed is up to $58,000. Again, we're recommending $28,300. Basically, what it translates to our recommended award is about one year's worth of taxes. The upgrades that we tend to gravitate towards are those that we consider to be more in the public domain. When estimates will come in, oftentimes, all of the upgrade, all of the work is bundled into one, whether it's a sidewalk or driveway improvement versus something that's being done in the interior of the building. We clearly like to focus on the public infrastructure, so we'll try to strip out the private and that's not really much of a concern of ours, and focus on things such as the utilities and the sidewalk, the parking, those types of elements. So the upgrades that are a part of this award or recommendation would be roadway improvements and utility upgrades for $10,000, three-phase electrical, commercial upgrade, including conduit and connection for $6,000, stormwater system improvements, which include permeable pavers and the tie-in to the stormwater system at $10,300, driveway access and rear parking improvements, including sidewalk at $2,000. Again, we're not saying that these values will fund 100% of that, it's our recommendation that we focus on those elements and a fraction of the total cost for those elements. In terms of overall benefits to the town, in general, we'll receive new annual taxes equivalent to about $29,000 and we'll get about 20 to 25 new jobs, upgraded utilities and infrastructure and supporting the growth of our local businesses. And again, as a reminder, this is a reimbursable grant, meaning that the risk to the town is almost nonexistent. The work has to be completed, we have to verify that it actually meets our standards, our codes. Documentation of payment must be demonstrated. Only at that point will we process a reimbursement to the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Counselor O'Bryant?
I think this place is great. It's offered a lot of excitement to the area and I'm happy that it's going to be expanding. I'm just wondering, how many parking places you think they're going to be able to come up with in the back? You know, Effian?
I don't. It's not a large number. Actually, in the rear, there's actually a small partnership with the art museum.
With the what?
With the Mystic Art Museum to try to do some shared parking. It's, it's, it's less than five in the rear, but they are trying to reconfigure some of the parking on the side lot as well. I don't have the exact numbers.
That's my only concern. I mean, we're eventually going to have to take on the problem with parking in Mystic, but right now, I mean, to go down to Mystic, I don't care. It's not weekends anymore and it's not the summer anymore, it's any time of the year you go down. My son lives at Mystic Factory Square and I go down and maybe I can find a place and maybe I just go on home. You know, and most times, I'm just going on home. It's, it's a real, a real situation, but I wouldn't want to hamper, you know, what I see as a real asset to the town, but I think eventually, we're going to have to address that problem.
I know that's a different matter. We've had some internal discussions and with others, and Mystic, and our recommendation would be that there be a real comprehensive parking management strategy rather than focus simply on providing more parking spaces. A lot of communities have taken some fairly unique approaches to try to better manage what they have, and it can be fairly significant in trying to address demand.
I'd like to see, can I say? I'd like to see us do something really good where the buses came to, you know, the cars could park, train traffic could be there, you know, to put a place that was really a hub center, and then you have small buses taking people to where they want to be, be the, or trolley or whatever, it'd be a perfect situation. But I'll leave that to Rita's group, because I'm sure they'll create it.
Definitely.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Sky Drive.
Good to see you, Mr. Brock. I saw that the requested amount was 57,271. How, what was behind that number? And I know you gave the reasoning for the requested amount or the granted amount from the town, but can you just speak to that number and what it would have included?
Well, it, um...
I am.
First of all, before I get into the details, it's important to put it in context. When, when an applicant begins discussing the potential of a request, we actually encourage them to put everything down, because it's difficult for us at that point to know what would be in that public domain versus not and what are we going to focus on. So a lot of times, that initial number is inflated. But the, on the referral at the bottom, you can, it actually shows the breakout for the site work, the three-phase, the stormwater and the driveway and rear parking and what they actually had requested. And it usually takes us a few months, actually, to work through a process. There's a lot of back and forth, because we're trying to filter out what we would consider to be more private costs, and that's how we will drill down and get to a fairly conservative recommendation in trying to pull out something that wouldn't necessarily be public infrastructure. So they always tend to shoot high, throw everything in there, we filter it and come down with a pretty solid recommendation.
And secondly, while this was a grant to receive in, where the town would reimburse for those, reimburse the business for those expenses, was there any consideration to doing a loan or, and if not, what would kind of constitute a project that would receive a, kind of a loan as opposed to a reimbursable grant or reimbursed grant?
We did not contemplate a loan mainly because the program hasn't been set up that way. The Economic Assistance Fund guidelines focus on grants alone, but I think that serves an important need. You don't have a copy of the application, we have lots of backup material that we don't typically put forward, but we also look at other funding sources and often, there are other loans. It's not simply a single bank that would provide a loan. In this case, there are two other funders besides the traditional loan from a local bank, by the way. So we think that our small grant is a complement to all of the other loans that they are receiving.
Right, thank you.
Counselor Franco?
As I heard you saying, on numerous occasions, it's always good that we, we award these grants to people. That means that economic development's happening in our communities here in Groton and that's a good thing. So I'm happy this has been brought to us. I think, as I've read all the documentation, that I think this is a good amount, and I would like to know, as we've asked before, will they be putting up a sign as well saying that we helped fund this location?
Yes, I didn't mention that, that is a part of our standard language, I believe, at the very end of the referral. And I have, okay, good. I have to give credit to our EDC committee that actually will review these. They were the ones that came up with that idea a couple of projects ago. We carry that language forward, and I think it is appropriate that if we're going to provide public funding to help a project, then the Town of Groton should gain recognition, just like any other funding institution.
Thank you. Just as Mr. Rogers Development has the sign up front.
Yes.
Counselor Schmidt?
I just had a question. In reading the explanation, it does sound as though they're expanding into a restaurant as well as a bakery. Is that true?
Um, well, they're having, there's a dining area.
Right.
So I have some numbers on that front. It's a 22, 2200 square foot commercial kitchen, there's a dining room and the parking, so I think it is fair to say that there is a small restaurant component. When you walk into SIFT today, there are a couple stand-up tables, you have the exterior seating, so someone could say that it's somewhat of a restaurant today, but they're certainly expanding that to try to accommodate interior guests and also those that would be on the sidewalk.
But it would be one thing to serve bakery products and another thing to serve actual dinners and menu, that type of menu.
Um, I am not aware that they're going to have a dinner menu. I've not heard that. I don't believe the zoning would prohibit that, but I have not heard that to date.
So this would just be an expansion of bakery products and coffee, which they're doing now and which is needed.
Right.
All right, thank you. Counselor Atwood?
I have a question for the town manager, talking about representative recognition of Groton for funding things. I noticed that the dedication today, the middle school, it had SLAM Architects, Arcadis is the management company and ONG is the builder, whatever. There was nothing on there about the Town of Groton, could we have the Town of Groton?
We didn't have the logo on there, but the name Town of Groton was a little bit higher recognized.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on 2019-279 Economic Assistance Fund Award, 5 Water Street, SIFT Bake Shop. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are on to 5L, 2019-281 Economic Assistance Fund, 255 Route 12, Grand Wine and Spirits, page 32. Counselor O'Bryant?
Motion to recommend a resolution approving a grant award of $59,000 to Grand Wine and Spirit for utility connections, stormwater system improvements and perimeter sidewalk construction costs to be paid on a reimbursement basis contingent on the posting of a sign indicating the project was supported by the Town of Groton Economic Assistance Fund after satisfying utility and sidewalk specifications and providing proof of payment of related costs. I so move.
Second. Moved by O'Bryant, seconded by Parker. Mr. Brock?
Very similar template and information. As stated, we're recommending a $59,000 grant on a reimbursement basis. In general, this is project, I think many people have seen it, the steel went up very quickly on Route 12, involved the demolition of an antiquated building that years ago had, had a fire, pretty much a stick-built building, a lot of steel that is going into this new building, meeting all modern standards. It will have multiple businesses in it as well, and of course, this particular business in being successful is moving out of a tenant space in the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza into his own, really, really putting some roots down. The project will entail about 11,420 square feet of retail, 2,400 square feet of office and about 7,600 square feet of storage inventory for, to satisfy the inventory for the primary business. I'm not aware that he has secured tenants for all of the space, but I know that he's anxious to do that. The grant award would go towards utility connections, stormwater system improvements and also perimeter sidewalk improvements. The total project construction value is $3,850,000. The post-improved assessed value is estimated at $1.9 million, which is a 60% increase over present property value. The post-improved annual tax estimate is about $54,659. Similar to the prior discussion, our recommendation of grant award is equivalent to approximately one year's worth of annual taxes. Specific upgrades that our grant award would be allocated towards, again, are towards the public infrastructure, utility connections for the water and sewer at $10,000, the stormwater system improvements, including an underground infiltration system and drainage at $39,400, and driveway and sidewalk with concrete sidewalks on the perimeter of the property at $9,600. I want to stress one thing, and that is the stormwater. It's an exorbitant value for him. The total stormwater upgrade cost for his project is about $80,000, stormwater alone. And it really is not a reflection of the town's requirements, per se. I think we're all familiar with this property. We know its proximity as a result of other properties that have been marketed in that area. It's at the bottom of a hill, and if you look at the site plan and you also look at the topographic changes coming down the hill, he's basically having to address stormwater that is running down someone else's property across the roadway and impacting his, his parcel. This infiltration system he has in the center of his property is a significant endeavor and that's what's driving the costs. But back to a point I made earlier, we are trying to support a business, but more importantly, we're supporting the upgrades to a property. So in the event that the property sells, it changes hands, a different use comes about, that stormwater system actually will be pivotal to actually flipping the property and making sure we have occupancy and we can realize the appropriate grand list benefits. In terms of overall benefits, it's a new multi-business complex, steel-framed building served by modern utilities, the stormwater upgrades, which I just discussed, not only for his property, for the whole neighborhood, and also, we would realize total annual taxes of about $55,000 annually.
Thank you. Counselor Schmidt? Counselor Schmidt?
I just had a question. It just seemed a little strange that the project construction cost is almost $4 million, but the increase in value is only $700,000.
Well, there's not always a direct correlation between construction and assessment. I'm not going to try to pretend I'm an expert in that field, but from a simple standpoint, if one looks at what he purchased, it wasn't raw land. It was land that also had a building on it.
Demolition.
So, in essence, when one demolishes a building and you build a new one, you're not necessarily adding new value. A new building is a replacement for value that was already there to some degree. And then, then there is a net benefit as a result of the larger building, the site upgrades, the fact that it's new, it's a steel building versus stick. So, I think that's where your real grand list benefit comes in. But in some ways, since there was a building there before, and now there's a building again, that initial value is kind of a wash.
It's just interesting. Counselor Heath?
Just answered my question.
Any other questions on this particular item? Counselor Ober.
I'll just make a little bit of a correction on the previous construction. That building was built well enough that when there was a fire, it never went out of the unit that the fire was in, and it totally destroyed the area the fire was in. So, it wasn't a badly-built building. It just never got finished. But the other thing is, I wanted to ask, is... Are the sidewalks going all the way around?
You would think I'd know that answer. Hold on one second. I know it's on three sides. Hold on one second.
It says perimeter of the property.
I believe it's on... I believe it's on most of the perimeter. There might be a minority portion, but I think most of the perimeter has sidewalks.
This is a pretty bad area when you get up towards one where across the way you go into the Mexican-Chinese pavilion back there. There's no place to walk at all. If you're coming down from Navy Housing, the sidewalk on the right-hand side ends, and there's none on the left-hand side. So, you do have a pretty dangerous spot there.
I know that when he was going through his regulatory review, he had to satisfy their requirements, and I... Deb Jones within the department came to me and said they really put a lot of requirements on him, including the sidewalks. So, if anything we can do to try to help him out, that would be great.
Well, I've seen sidewalks go no place. So, no. I just want to make sure that there's a way that the sidewalk that's in the military housing, that there's a crossing there, that then they can get on a sidewalk and continue to get up to where the light is, the cross to go over into where Coles is. And right now, there is nothing. So, I would just hope that note might be made of that.
I certainly will talk with Deb and see what she knows.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll vote on 2019-281 Economic Assistance Fund Award, 255 Route 12, Grand Wine and Spirits. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So, moving unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are on... Let's take a break.
John, just rack up and planning and be here just a moment.
So, request for recess, five minutes? Okay. We're back from recess at 8:45, and we have... The next time is 2019-282 Single Use Plastic Reduction Ordinance on page 34. And I'm going to turn this over to Counselor Heath, please.
I would like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing regarding a single-use plastic reduction ordinance. I so move.
Moved by Heath. Seconded by Franco. And would you like to just address the change to this for the council of the public?
The change? Oh.
Page 34.
Yeah. I'm changing the motion because what I'm motioning to do is to schedule a public hearing so that we can approve a single-use plastic reduction ordinance.
Great. Okay. Any...
You changed it to what?
I'm just scheduling a public hearing. I'm just asking to schedule a public hearing.
Are you taking away the workshops?
Yeah. We've already passed it through the Conservation Commission, and at this point, I think it's time to put it out to the public and have some public comments.
So, would you read it just one more time, please?
Sure. I will make a motion to schedule a public hearing regarding a single-use plastic reduction ordinance.
Thank you. Did you catch it? Counsel Ober.
I caught it. I don't agree.
Okay. That's your prerogative. Did you wish to speak further? Go ahead.
If I may, I was at a program this week, and this was... The discussion was about this. And the amount of confusion that there is about this, to do this without workshops before would be asking uneducated people to vote on something or come and talk about something they know nothing about. You have to educate people before you can do a public forum. You know, is that... Is part of it going to be an educational thing, or is it just going to... It says here, gather input.
Well, we can also gather input through a public hearing. When we did the BYOB ordinance, we didn't have workshops. We didn't do anything like that. We gathered information. We had people come and speak, and we voted on it.
I'm sorry. I can't agree with this. This is a totally different thing. This is big, and this is going to impact a lot of people, a lot of businesses, and a lot of people just don't have the knowledge. We were in a debate yesterday about whether a plastic bottle goes with a cap on or the cap off. I mean, and if you do it incorrectly, the container that that product is in will be disposed of in an entirely different way, not an appropriate way. So, I don't think people know things like that. So, I think it's premature. I think we have to reverse, have some workshops, educate people that want to be educated, and then have a community forum on it.
Counselor Parker?
I agree. And two, I have questions about the ordinance, especially the enforcement. Who's enforcing this? And we're only given businesses and the public six months which to comply, and if they don't, they're going to get fined? The person's going to be fined? Or the... If I'm reading this correctly, say I use a plastic bag after the six months as a single use, are you guys going to fine me? You're going to find... People are not going to be able to afford it. They can't afford probably reusable bags sometimes. So, who is this... I know you guys... I understand trying to reduce our plastics, but who is it going to eventually benefit if we're going to have to pay fines into it? And who's collecting? Who is going to be enforcing this and going out and double-checking that people are doing this correctly?
Counselor Heath, did you want to address that?
Well, the ordinance is geared towards companies. So, for example, it bans plastic straws, which are not recyclable, except, of course, in the case of somebody who has a health issue where they need to ask for plastic straws. But they could also offer paper straws at no charge. And then, the idea behind plastic cutlery and plastic stirs as well, these are not recyclable items. So, the business would be charged with not offering plastic cutlery or plastic stirs, but providing an alternative. In addition, with the plastic bags, these are made with a very thin millimeter of plastic, and a lot of times, people dispose of them improperly, and so they can end up in plastic... They end up in the recycle bins where they then go through the process and they gum up the machines. It's a three-millimeter kind of plastic. So, what you do is you create a situation where our community is aligned with Stonington, aligned with other communities along the shoreline, including Greenwich, where they already have a plastic bag ordinance. We're not the first community to do this. Actually, every municipality in the state of Hawaii has a plastics ordinance. The state doesn't, though. So, what we're... The point of this is just to start very basic, eliminate a few small items that are being disposed of improperly, and create momentum so that the state can get on board and hopefully eliminate more plastics.
Counselor Parker, did you have something else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, are we telling businesses they can no longer... Grocery stores can no longer sell it? So, are we going this route? I just want to make sure that we're telling people that they can't buy... Basically, can't tell them not to buy plastics. I just want to be...
Not they can't buy plastics. It's that you don't provide a plastic bag at checkout. You provide a box. You provide reusable bags. You provide paper bags.
I'm sorry. In looking at this whole ordinance, I see plastic, other things that are plastic in here. You're telling a business establishment, which would be grocery stores included, you're saying that people, if they go and buy that, they're not... People aren't supposed to be buying it, basically, because they're providing...
Where is it in the ordinance place?
No, no. I'm saying it says a business establishment. I'm trying to figure out if people go in a grocery store, buy plastic cutlery, how are we doing that? Just go with me here on this thought process, please, before everybody starts shaking their head, no. I see plastic stirs are sold in the grocery stores. You're telling the businesses that can buy the stuff from the grocery stores or a person who buys groceries and buys in bulk sometimes. Where are we going with this? How far are we taking this for the people that are buying stuff?
The ordinance says food service establishments. It doesn't state grocery stores. That indicates fast-food restaurants, Starbucks, Big Y, which is already getting rid of plastic bags by December of this year.
But there's also plastic cutlery. I'm going through what you have in here about them using stuff. So, am I wrong in thinking my thought process in this part? John?
Good evening. Do you mind if I enter?
No, go ahead. We still have counselors that wish to speak, though. I got you, Counselor Ron Gardner, but go ahead.
So, again, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. We drafted this ordinance. This is the first time this council has seen this draft ordinance. There are a number of things we're looking for some policy direction on. Specifically to your question, no, Stop &amp; Shop would still be able to sell plastic cutlery, which I always want to say cuddle, where it doesn't roll off your tongue well. They can still sell that for households to use. The problem becomes, and we say no business, you know, so under 10-194, no business establishment shall provide or make available any plastic carryout bag. That's very specific to the bags.
Which would be part of the grocery store because they have grocery bags.
So, they... The single-use bags at checkout as opposed to we're not prohibiting somebody from selling trash bags or bathroom bags or things along those lines. Instead, it is the single-use bag at checkout going to letter C for that. No food service establishment shall provide a single-use plastic straw, plastic cutlery, or plastic stirr as defined under this section. It doesn't say you can't buy a box of those. In talking to a local food service establishment, a restaurant that I like to go to in town, that restaurant owner is now serving all of their drinks with cardboard or paper straws. Also, I asked him what they were doing in regards to plastic cutlery. And he said, you know, actually, so these paper straws, he tried out eight different straws before he found the one that he liked. They cost three cents more per straw. He buys them in a box of 1,500. But, he said, we don't just put a straw in everything. We actually ask our customers, do you want a straw? And he... So, they're going through a retraining of how they approach these types of things. So, now, he's actually giving out a lot less straws than he used to before, buying them in a box of 1,500. He said the same thing happened with plastic cutlery. Before, if somebody came and picked up an order to go, they would think nothing of, all right, this looks like enough food for four to six people. We'll throw six packages of single-use plastic cutlery in there. Now, before somebody checks out, they say, oh, do you actually need to go forks and spoons in these items? And if people don't, he said they're not really giving away anymore plastic forks and spoons and knives because they're just asking people, because most people that are getting things to go are taking it from there. So, the intent is for the restaurants, the food establishments, not to impact people having parties at their homes and to prevent the Big Ys, the Stop &amp; Shops and Walmarts, from selling those types of products.
On that note, how many businesses would be affected in Groton that would do that? And I don't think six months would be enough time to do that. And I still don't know who's enforcing it.
That's something we have not yet determined, whether it would be the police department, whether it would be... This is in the general ordinances of the town, so that's something we still have to determine.
Counselor Ron Gardner?
Well, first, I just want to thank you for your work on this, and certainly, many members of this council, especially Counselor Heath on these efforts, and the Conservation Commission as well. Just a few of my concerns regarding doing away with the public forum. Counselor Obrion and I discussed earlier about her visit to Avery Point and how she was able to engage a group of young people to talk about these issues. And from the feedback that we received from the Conservation Commission through their online... The online survey showed that there is a lot of interest in town to learn about this issue, to offer their perspective. And I, you know, while the public hearing does serve that purpose, I think for something of this magnitude warrants almost a roadshow in taking that conversation to, I'd say, different parts of town, whether it's the library or elsewhere, public space outside of this building, where we can engage the public and kind of solicit their perspective on these issues, and perhaps even add teeth to the current proposal. I think a few of us received emails from some folks from the Groton Conservation Advocates about adding teeth, whether it's reassessing the definition of reusable bags, exploring a ban on styrene or styrofoam. And so, you know, while this is a start, and I, you know, I'm certainly supportive of what we have, I do think that kind of through a more public outreach process, we could, you know, find new solutions and perhaps stronger solutions to mitigating, I think, the plastic, you know, plastics being thrown all over town as we've seen for so many years. So, you know, kind of leave it at that. But this is an issue that's really important, and certainly to our environment, to our waterways. And I would just hope that the council moving forward, you know, we don't get kind of stuck in the mud, but we kind of make this into, you know, just a more collaborative process.
Counselor Ober.
I want to commend you, Conrad, for stepping forward with this, and I think this is a good thing to work towards. I think we have a big problem coming, as many communities do right now, as to what we're going to be doing with our garbage in the future, or even now. We're having, you know, I get things from my garbage collector telling me what to put in this can, what to put in this can, and, you know, it's a bigger issue, and it'll be bigger for us because in a little while, Groton's going to be saying, where are we putting our rubbish? So, I think it's an excellent first step, but I still feel the educational portion of it needs to go first because I think we're going to find that there's a lot of questions out there that'll come from the community that will help us in going forward to solve the bigger problem that we're going to have. And I do commend you for the work that you've done on this, and you, John, also, but I think that we've got to be the bandwagon. We've got to get out and let people know. we've got to be the bandwagon. We've got to get out and let people know what this is really the beginning of.
So the, the public hearing would be the forum for people to come forward and present their views. And that doesn't mean we act immediately once the public hearing is over. We then have a chance to sit back and take in what the public has said and make changes as need be. And as Counselor Bumgarner did say, we're getting emails from people saying, we want this tougher. You know, not, not to get rid of it, but make it, make it have more teeth and make it encompass more products. So I think the hearing is a good way to get everybody out there to come to us and tell us what they want. And whether they agree or they don't agree, it's, it's a necessary first step to do this. And then, once the hearing is over, we sit back, we take a cowl meeting, whatever we need to do, and we revise it as we see fit. And if we need to, we meet with Conservation Commission again. We meet with the people who have the biggest concerns with it. And I do appreciate the fact that town staff has been meeting with local business owners to discuss their issues that they're having with it and that they have considered the view of the local business owners. Did you, Counselor Franco, and then Heed again?
So when this ordinance was being written, and we use, you were part of this?
Yes.
Was that Mr. Reiner?
Yeah, so our, our staff worked on this ordinance. We looked at ordinances from Stonington, from other Connecticut municipalities, as well as a number of Rhode Island municipalities that have adopted similar ordinances.
Okay. So I remember it going off to the Conservation Committee. And one of the, one of the things we were concerned about was not, we wanted to educate the public. I know that that was one of the biggest things that we, at least I had asked more. I can't speak for anybody else. So we also talked about looking at Stonington and what they were doing. So I noticed here, we're doing plastic bags, plastic cuddle, cuddle, cutlery.
Cutlery.
Cutlery, plastic stirs and plastic straws. But Stonington is doing plastic bags, straws, and styrofoam takeout containers. So we've changed ours not to mimic our neighbor. It's going to be different. So that's some things I have a little concerns about because I, I know one of our things was to be like them so that when you didn't cross over the bridge in Mystic, it didn't all change. Things didn't change. But I'm just going to call it plasticware instead of the other word. But anyway, if I go, well, I'm not going to go there, but just say people go to KFC, or they go to McDonald's, and they order a salad, or they order mashed potatoes, you're not going to give them something to eat it with. And that concerns me.
There are other options. So there are compostable and other types of materials that cutlery can be made out of, other than plastic. I know a lot about this. A, a friend of mine manages a large compost farm in Charlestown, Rhode Island, so I, I know a little bit more about some of this stuff maybe than the average person. But there are other options. They might cost three cents more than something that's plastic. But something else can be used, an alternative, that will break down in the natural environment in a much shorter period of time versus something that's plastic. There are a few deviations in this ordinance from the Stonington ordinance. I think that ordinance has also changed a little bit since the time we first looked at it. There are some policy questions that we kind of put out here in the referral memo, as well as some items that came up from an email from the Conservation Advocates of Groton that we wanted to get some feedback from the council on, such as, do you want to include styrofoam? So some of the same questions you have, I need a little bit of direction from the council. So whether that direction comes from a public hearing and after, or if it happens now, we redraft the ordinance, that, that's up to this group. This was our, our best first stab, like trying to put something together, taking from the best of multiple places.
Okay, I understand. One other, a few other things. The reusable bags, and this is on my page thirty-six, and it's the one, about the sixth paragraph down, it states in here what type of bag, how thickness, and then it goes on to say, any straps or handles shall be stitched. I mean, like, and it has to be, and it has to be like a, it cannot be plastic handle. It has to be a non-woven textile or durable, or a durable plastic with a minimum thickness of four mils. Any straps or handles must be stitched. And I'm like, are we really getting that nitty-gritty into it about the straps on a plastic bag that we're going to reuse over and over and over again?
Yes.
Is there a reason for this?
Yes, because if, if it's not that durable, even, I have a lot of reusable bags at home, and you can tell the difference between some that were well-constructed and others that weren't, and some that break down very quickly, or literally the, the handles rip right out of them, that weren't stitched in very well, or were a much thinner material, as opposed to something that was thicker and made. Again, taking that from other municipal ordinances that have been drafted. And we also did a little bit of research on the thickness of plastic bags. So the average single-use bag is about point five mils, somewhere between point five and one. The, most ordinances are in the two-point-five to five range on this. Most of the regional ordinances in Rhode Island, Mass., and Connecticut seem to be somewhere around that four number for reusable bags or a little thicker. One outlier is Greenwich, Connecticut, which requires reusable bags to be greater than twelve. The, Stonington is proposing four or thicker for their restriction, but the pending state ordinance right now in Connecticut actually defines reusable bags as being thicker than twelve. So the numbers are a little bit all over the place, as well as how they're constructed.
So do you think, like, the big, I don't know, big box stores, like, let's just say McDonald's, or somebody that does a lot of customers, a lot, they're going to be able to do this within a six-month period from their corporate office to make sure that Groton, you know, and these sprinkled towns around the country are able to get these because of ordinances?
This is a national trend. The town I work in adopted a plastic bag ban a few months ago. It didn't go into effect immediately. I think there was a little bit of lead time with that also. When I'm going to those grocery stores now, I'm not seeing plastic anymore. If anybody goes to Trader Joe's, they don't have plastic. They've always had paper for, I know there's one up in Warwick, Rhode Island. Other places are doing this.
I definitely see the bag situation and maybe the straws. And, but I've never, I haven't seen the plasticware. That's, I'm not seeing any big move on that one. That one seems new to me. And I'm wondering if the bigger stores that produce a lot, will they be able to do this type of thing? That's, I'm not, I'm not sure about that one.
Counselor Heed wanted to speak again.
Well, two things. First of all, we can't solve the whole plastics problem in Groton. I think the idea and the recommendation coming from the Conservation Commission was you start small. So we have four things in here that we want to basically limit or ban, basically.
Three?
Straws, stirs, bags, and cutlery. So there are four things. And the idea is you start small and go from, like, you, you, so the second part of what I was going to say flows into this, so I'm sorry, I, I'm merging this together. But my thought process on it is that you do a public hearing, get this ordinance or something like it passed, and then start the public education part to follow along. So this is not like a single, you know, we're done, we vote on it, we're done, never to happen again. It's a process where next year, you know, if, if we end up taking cutlery out, maybe next year we come back and we say, after we have a few public discussions or something to that effect, let's go ahead and get rid of the styrofoam takeout containers. Maybe you go beyond that and you, you do something else. This is sort of a, a starting point. So you start small and you don't have to be a leader in the field of plastic reduction. It's just sort of getting the ball rolling, if that makes sense. And like, if, if we start the plastic now, in my mind, then you walk into a convenience store and you say, hey, look, we've gotten rid of plastic bags. What is your plan to get rid of these styrofoam cups or the plastic tops to your coffee cups or something, something like that? And they take it from there. So it sort of creates a little bit of a, a fire under their feet, or motivation, creates a little bit of momentum.
Thank you. Counselor Atwater?
Just a few things. One, I, I feel like I'm blindsided, blindsided by coming in thinking that this is what we're going to talk about. And, and could you repeat again, Counselor Heed, exactly what your motion was? I thought it said something about plastic reduction, which is pretty broad. I don't know if that's what you said.
That's just the name of the, the ordinance, basically. And when I opened up the packet, I realized it wasn't exactly, it wasn't what I thought it was going to be. That's why I wanted to make a motion to change it and start with a public hearing and go from there.
And then, am I correct, if, if we do pass an ordinance, it has to be voted on by the town or is it just voted on by us?
It's the town council and the RTM.
You mean the RTM?
Well, the RTM or the town.
It would go to the RTM.
Who is the legislative body that puts an ordinance in force?
We are the legislative body, but any ordinances have to go through the RTM as well.
Okay.
So you would have the hearing here, then you'd have something in the RTM as well.
They don't, they veto.
Right.
Okay, because, because a couple of things that, you talk about passing the ordinance and then having education and so forth and teaching people. But we've had three, maybe four meetings that I'm aware of about the development of Paquonic Village, and nothing has been done. But that's been an educational learning process. So I don't see why there's a problem with having an educational learning process before we jump into the actual ordinance. But my other question really is, has anybody talked to SCARA? I mean, they're an authority that we are a member of who deal with this all the time. And I don't know, and they are more than happy to come out and do roadshows. They currently have an exhibit in, in the library. And I can't believe that nobody has talked to them about what this means or what the situation is in, in the state, in Groton, in the country or whatever, about recyclables. It just seems that if you're looking for, for guidance and so forth, to me, they would be, they would be unnatural. So I just, I just feel that all of a sudden we're rushing into something. And I, I just, I don't think that's, that makes a lot of sense.
As far as recyclables, the, the idea with this is reduction, to, to use less of it rather than taking it and recycling it. We're, my thought is, I would like to see people producing less of it and using less of it. So not so much as, how are we going to deal with it once we're done with that single-use plastic? I would like to see less single-use plastic out there. So that's, that's where I was coming from with this. Who else hasn't? Counselor Schmidt, I'm trying to go to people who haven't spoken yet. Did you need to speak on this?
No.
Okay, so Counselor Bumgarner and Franco both. So who would like to go first? Go ahead.
I know the city of Fairfield, I think on Earth Day, the city of Fairfield and the city of Norwalk teamed up to announce the, a ban on plastic, plastic straws. And they've already banned single-use plastic bags. And they made that joint announcement with the Norwalk Aquarium. And I know the Mystic Aquarium here has obviously done extensive work, not just in our own sound, but throughout the Atlantic Ocean and elsewhere in research on this very issue. And perhaps they could, you know, they're very much a stakeholder in the game and could provide input on the cutlery issue as well. And so, you know, well, we could certainly kind of gauge their thoughts on a public hearing, perhaps kind of it, as, you know, we had discussed earlier about, you know, a more robust roadshow model, you know, that perhaps they can be a partner in, in engaging the public on, on this issue as well.
Counselor Franco?
I am all for reducing plastics. I mean, I think there's, it's a toxic waste that's in our environment that is, it's getting in our marine animals and we're eating it. It's, it's a horrible thing. I just, to be honest with you, I, I wasn't really prepared for some of the things that I'm seeing in here because it's not things that we've even discussed before. I, I mean, plasticware wasn't even something that came up in past conversations. Stirs were not something that came up in past conversations. It was mostly plastic bags and straws. And it was, let's look towards Stonington to see what they're doing. And, and I know that the survey also had stated that there were many people that were willing to come out and help on a committee to work on this. And so I'm, I'm not sure why we asked them to, if they were interested in working on this, if we're just going to do it. That's what I'm not quite understanding either. And I think the enforcement part is a huge issue that is really not even, other than they're just notating town representative, will be notified by a town representative, which I think is an issue. I am all for reducing plastics. I think it's very honorable and something that we should do. And I think it's crossing the country and it's in a big wave right now. And I think we're going in the right direction. I just, I don't know, I'm just having some issues with some of the things in here that, that's why we're here to talk about it and work these things out and trying to work with them. And it, but I do believe, I just have to say, instead of reading the motion as it was and then making an amendment, I think that might be, would have been a better way to go with it. And then we could have discussed either or.
Mr. Burke, when, when would the public hearing, what would be the soonest that we could do a public hearing? I'm assuming it wouldn't be till June?
It'd be the meeting in June. I mean, because you hold a special meeting, do something earlier than that. But the typical process would be the regular council meeting in June.
So then we would have all of the month of May to talk to people about this and have it in the newspaper and be getting feedback from various conservation groups and the community before the public hearing was even going to take place.
Correct. Did you want to say anything else?
Um, no.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak again? So would you read one more time what we're voting on, please?
Motion to schedule a public hearing regarding a single-use plastic reduction ordinance.
And do you have that, Mr. Burke, or do you need that committed to writing?
That's fine.
Okay.
Can I just ask a process question?
Counselor Franco?
So if this fails, then what?
Nothing at this point unless someone makes another motion.
So if it fails, we don't go forward, is that?
If this thing that's on the floor fails, unless somebody makes another motion, then nothing happens. So.
So for example, the original motion, not the original, but the one that was written could be made.
After it fails?
Mm-hmm.
So is there any?
Or, or should it be that somebody made a second motion restoring how this was originally written?
So this is listed as a draft motion, okay? You looked down at the bottom, it's a draft motion. I defer to Counselor Heed because this was his item that he was interested in. And I let, I think it was a good idea to permit Counselor Heed to put forth the language that he chose to put forth, as this was his project he was working on.
What does draft motion mean?
It's not the final motion. I mean, it's just, it's a draft that the staff put forward for us to work with. So therefore, I believe we can, we can play with it and we can change it up as we need to change it up, which is what he did. So we have a motion on the floor to schedule a public hearing on this item. Counselor Obrion?
I'd like to put another amendment on the floor.
So this isn't like budget, though, so we can't do that.
Can't do that.
So, so you can, you can-
Second.
Let me, give me a minute here. Give me a minute. Give me a minute.
What can we do, John?
Probably the best, I think the best, cleanest way would be to vote and then let it fail or let it pass. And then put another motion out there.
Probably the less, the least confusing, but you can, you can amend and strike anything you want and add it if you want.
Right.
But it gets more confusing.
But it's, it is. It's going to be, it's going to be messier that way. I think it'd be better to let it stand or fail on its merit and then come back in with something alternative.
But we have right here what we've been talking about that we think might be better to do.
Well, that's what you think might be better to do, and that's fine. But that's not what's on the floor. So we need to-
But isn't this what it was supposed to be originally?
That was the draft that staff put together, that the person that wanted-
You vote this down and then under new business or other business, you make a motion.
You go for it, David. Good.
Counselor Schmidt?
I just wondered, what is the motion?
One more time, please.
To schedule a public hearing regarding a single-use plastic reduction ordinance.
So I thought you had a different motion on the floor.
That was the motion that I wrote for.
That is the...
It's here.
He moved the motion that he wanted to make at this point.
Oh, that wasn't the motion.
That's not what is here.
That's not the motion in the packet.
In the cow packet, however, this was his item. So he changed it to read the way he wanted it to read.
Right.
So we will vote on...
I didn't write it like that. I thought we may have had a miscommunication in how I wanted to proceed with it. That's all.
So, so we have a motion on the floor. And the way I would like to proceed is to have a vote on that motion once everyone's done discussing. And then if someone else has something that they would like to offer instead, if this motion does not pass at that point, we could entertain that motion. Counselor Baumgartner has his hand up.
Just a clarifying, clarifying question. So setting the public hearing, Mr. Burke, would not preclude the council or the, and/or the town to host a public hearing prior to that, to that, I'm sorry, to host a public forum prior to that public hearing, irrespective of whether or not we pass a resolution tonight?
No, other than it's kind of short timing. And just to point out too, even if you have a public hearing, you could make changes and hold more public hearings because there'll be a presentation at that first public hearing. So, you know, so nothing, you can stretch it out as long as you want and have as many hearings as you want.
Counselor Parker.
I believe Counsel Atwater, did we present this to SCARA? Have they seen this too? Okay.
This is a draft ordinance that staff prepared at the direction of the council after the presentation of the Conservation Commission. We are taking this to the council, looking for policy direction and what you want to do next.
Okay.
Because I didn't want to start taking a draft ordinance that you haven't said, yes, we like this, no, I don't like this, why stirrers, yeah, we like straws, no cutlery. Staff needs direction on which way you want to go before we start doing any public forums and outreach and education.
Okay, because I still think we need to go over this again and review it. It makes sense to go over again, each of us, because getting it in a week and trying to review all this without having clear definitions or clear understanding of what, where we're going, I, besides not having the workshops, I don't think we should be able to present something to the public without us understanding what it is ourselves.
So I just wanted to add one thing about SCAR. SCAR is Southeastern Connecticut Resource Recovery. What's the other? Our Regional Resource Recovery, right?
Authority.
So it's, it's about garbage, right? This is about preventing garbage. So this doesn't really impact SCAR. It should not have an impact on SCAR because you're going to be just sending less garbage to SCARA, whatever you want to call it.
I'm sorry, but if people are buying plastics or utensils and putting it in the garbage, and we're trying to reduce it, so I think it's a two-way street on it.
So I understand there are questions about it, and Counselor Heed was trying to answer some of your questions earlier, as far as the, the cutlery and everything goes. But right now, we have a motion on the floor. If you'd like to continue discussing it now, we can go back and forth on this here and ask Mr. Reiner for his input or whoever you'd like to ask for input. But do you want to continue the discussion? Would you like to vote? What's your pleasure?
I'd like to answer.
Counselor Baumgartner.
If we can extend the discussion just a little bit more, to Counselor Atwater's point, SCARA, in addition to, you know, being in the trash business, they're, they have a wealth of data and knowledge about whether it's trash, recycling, and, you know, they could very well be a resource on, on providing, you know, statistics and numbers as to, you know, how much trash has Groton, Groton has sent, and potentially trash that could be mitigated from kind of sending plastics their way. You know, there, a lot of the initiatives they've, they've done have been in line with the reduction in use of, of plastics. So as, I, I think they could be a resource. In that respect, I, I think, you know, Counselor Atwater's points should, should certainly be considered as well.
Okay. Do we wish to vote tonight? All right, I'll call for a vote on 2019, 282, single-use plastic reduction ordinance. I think I'm going to need hands. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Heed, Baumgartner, Granatowski. All those opposed, Parker, Franco, O'Gree, Atwater, Schmidt. And there should be no abstentions, correct? No abstentions. So that motion is three in favor, Granatowski, Heed, Baumgartner, two, three, four, five opposed, Parker, Franco, O'Gree, Atwater, Schmidt, and zero abstentions. So the motion as presented failed. Okay. So that is off the floor. Counselor Baumgartner.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend a resolution to hold a series of workshops and/or forum, public forum, to gather input from the community on the proposed ordinance prior to scheduling a public hearing. So move.
Second. Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Franco. I'm just thinking, are we, process-wise, are we okay on this, stoning this way?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there discussion on the new motion that's on the floor? Counselor Atwater?
I just have a technical question. According to our agenda, we're supposed to review agenda items before we take up other business?
This is another business, though. This is still the same item. It's not a new item.
It's on the agenda.
Right.
All right. I just want to be clear, that's all.
Right. So is there further discussion on Counselor Baumgartner's motion? Counselor Parker.
Would it be possible to get this reviewed also by SCARA? I know there's concerns. I would like another opinion before we do anything, before we present this to everyone, the forums, and have them come out and talk about plastics themselves and what the impact is as part of the group, the workshop. And then, before having the public hearing, I think each of us needs to review this carefully after attending the workshops ourselves, if possible, to review this before we present it to the public. Because I have serious questions, and it boils down to, I know you're saying establishments, but eventually that's going to come boil down to people's homes. And I still need clarification about how we're going to get the enforcement part and violations. And I believe the extended, the six-month period, I think it needs to be longer.
So my question is, Mr. Burke, perhaps you can answer this. What kind of timeframe were you thinking when the motion was written? Were you thinking a month to do forums? Were you thinking two months? What was the thought process?
John actually wrote the motion, put this together.
Ah, it was you.
But, yeah.
What were you thinking, Mr. Reiner?
Again, I was looking for direction from the council. So the last time we discussed this, the council had talked about working with the Conservation Commission as well as the Economic Development Commission to try to do some outreach, to put together some public forums on this very issue. So I would think at least a couple of months, depending on how many forums or if it's one forum. At the same time, I still have a number of policy questions on what the council's looking for, excuse me, from a plastic ordinance. Yes, Stonington has it one way, other municipalities have it a different way. So there's still some uncertainty even on what we're looking for. If your intention is to have public forums, to have people give us some general input of what they're in favor of or not in favor of, I'm...
You need a starting point.
I need a starting point.
Right. So is this an insufficient starting point, do you feel?
This is a starting point, but if, I don't know if all the council members, I, I know all the council members are not on the same page. I'm hearing some very valid questions being brought up from different people. I, I can assure you that there is no way or intention that the way this ordinance is written now, that it isn't meant to apply to people's homes. But if you don't know that, then many other people don't know that. So that's going to be a, a big source of confusion as we're talking about these issues. So I think it's worth getting that word out there. What does the council want to do on styrofoam? I, I think staff look at, we got the direction of plastic bags and plastic straws, looking at other ordinances, well, what's the difference between a straw and a, a plastic stirrer? You see piles of those all over the place. It's, as well as many places have wood or cardboard stirrers. So that seems like an easy one. If we're going to do straws, we might as well do that. Cutlery, that's one that I think there's still some confusion on what you want to do, what are other places doing? Do we want to be a leader on it? Do we want to kind of follow the course a little bit and see what other people are doing? Again, that, that's up to the council.
So my sentiment, as I said at prior meetings, was I would like to see us matching what Stonington is doing just for consistency, because we do share downtown Mystic together. And also, Westerly jumped in, I think Waterford's jumping in. So as consistent as we can be with our other neighboring communities, I think would be a good way to go. And even if that entails adding in styrofoam, I would be perfectly fine with that. Mr. Burke?
Do those others have styrofoam, John?
I didn't believe that Stonington had, but I thought somebody tonight said Stonington had styrofoam, so...
Now, what about cutlery? No one else is doing that in those couple places?
In those couple that I'm aware of, but other municipalities are. So that, that was something, I mean, again, if you look at the background, the cover memo that we supplied, there were, you know, and for example, Stonington only bans plastic straws at full-service restaurants, not at fast food. So where are most of these being handed out? Fast food restaurants. You know, do, do we want to tackle the pet peeve of people who get a, a iced coffee that then put a styrofoam cup underneath it so it doesn't drip? Then you're creating, you know, a double whammy if things that don't break down for over a hundred years, so for a single cup of coffee. Again, at, at what level do you want to take this?
Right. Does anybody else want to offer input to Mr. Reiner tonight, or when are you prepared to offer input to Mr. Reiner? Counselor O'Gree.
I think some of the paper mills are probably going to reopen up in Maine. That's all.
Counselor Franco.
So I'm just not fully educated on all the recycling and all of the biodegradable and so this came to us, I'm saying, it came to me, and it came as an ordinance. And I was like, whoa, there, the ordinance is already drafted. And I, I know we heard from the Conservation Commission, and, and they gave us a survey, and they said, give, you know, you some direction. And that's why I'm sort of a little surprised that it's happened so quickly a little bit. I don't know, I know it was coming. But I was also expecting some type of presentation to maybe educate us even some, a little bit more on some other things that are inside of what, what's here so that we would know more. Because like I said, the plasticware, I'm like, I had never even heard of this. I don't know. And so that, so I'm making, I don't want to make decisions about things that I'm not sure of or I don't understand and I don't know anything about. And that's one of the problems I'm having. So one of the things, like I said, was to educate, and it wasn't just me, it's like businesses. So that's somewhere I stand. And I did, I apologize, I had said it was bags, straws, and styrofoam, and that was actually what the state is looking at, at the General Assembly. And when I mentioned those items, Stonington, it was, it says here that they're not including the plasticware or stirrers. They are including the straws and the bags. So I just, I personally need more education on this before I can, and I was welcoming to the first motion that was workshops, because I would be going to them, so I too can learn for the rest of the town. That's why I was going to go.
So we haven't voted that yet, so we still have a chance to vote for that. Anybody else want to offer guidance to Mr. Reiner?
I...
Counselor Parker.
We talked to every business that this would affect.
Are then, we're talking a year or more to reach out to every, every business in town? There are a lot of businesses in town. We can send direct mailings and invite people to forums, but to, to go directly to every single business in town that this would impact, I, I don't know how many businesses that are.
Okay. We need their input too. So, because it's going to affect them too. So that, if that, if it costs more for them, which means they raise their prices to cover the cost for stuff, which in turn affects people going to the businesses. So I think everybody needs a say in this. And I want all businesses, even if we have to put a mail out and say, hey, what are your thoughts? Can you do this? Because we need to know that. We, I know we did a survey, and we had so many people reply. Maybe it's time to do another survey to confirm that this is what people want, because we got a little bit of number here. And that's going to affect a lot of businesses. We got, we need to know, because we're trying to build Groton back up, but then on the same token, we're going to find people if they're not doing it correctly. I have, I, where are we going?
Counselor O'Gree and then Heed.
I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm kind of thinking back, you know, prior to Walmart coming in, you know, that was the big scare to businesses at the time. And we did an educational seminar for the business owners, and we had a really good turnout. Because what they were trying to teach them how to make their businesses more personal, and that would, you know, make them different from Walmart, which they were already. But the point is, we had a good turnout, we learned a lot, and we moved forward. And I think at this point, we don't need to be going to each, each business, but I do think that we need to plan a presentation for them and a question and answer period. And I think we can do that with a letter where we invite them to come, and we do a short presentation and then have a question and answer period. And I know, we're always adding to your workload, and I apologize for that, but I think it's really the better way to go. And then we're, we're going to know if we're doing the right thing for our town. I mean, I think inevitably, yes, we're going to do this, but it's better to do it where people don't say to us, well, you never told us. And, and people really don't pay attention. It's really sad. You don't know the emails I got today from people saying, what's going on at the top of the hill? How long have we been talking about that school? You know, so you really got to poke them in the eye.
Counselor Heed.
Nobody said politics is easy, and there's nothing that isn't frustrating about this conversation. But I have to point out the fact that we don't march in lockstep. We're all in the same party, and we all have different ideas and different opinions, and we're all saying a very wide range of things. And, you know, that's, I think, why I think we're doing a good job, so.
Mr. Burke?
I have some concerns that we're going right to a public hearing, because I'm not sure our product's at that point of doing it. I like the idea of getting SCARA or someone else to come give a presentation on, I think it is a good idea, or some other expert, so we fully understand what each, each definition means, what, you know, what the impacts are, that type of thing. And then we can, and I, a couple of things, I'd like to tweak a couple of things in there too, based on what I'm hearing tonight. And then you can give us input, and then we'll have a better product to, to hold a presentation to the public and get input. So I think at this point, it's probably better to slow down a little bit. I think, I think we'll end up with, at a better place.
So then, if we approve the motion as it stands on the floor, is that enough direction for you? Are you still looking for more specifics, like get rid of this, get rid of that?
I think we can, I think John's suggestion is perfect. I think for us to bring SCARA in, present to the council, inform you a little bit about the general policies of recycling, it'll probably be, you know, the Counselor O'Gree's concerns about even not knowing the bottle, bottle without a cap, with a cap. I think having that type of presentation at a council meeting will be good for the council as well as the general public. I don't know how much they have advised on plastic reduction ordinances. Many other colleagues that I've spoken to, other municipalities I'm familiar with, this stuff usually ends up in the planning department's laps, which we're usually not experts in plastics. But it's something, all right, we do research, we find out the best that we can. Or sometimes it ends up in public works laps, and they end up doing it. Sometimes it's led by Conservation Com- Sometimes it's led by Conservation Commissions, Girl Scout troops. It, it's all different people that you see, you know, council members who bring these types of things up and say, what initiative? And then the different levels of education, sometimes it happens after an ordinance is adopted. I know that's going on in my hometown a little bit. There was a little bit of public input prior to a public hearing. It was something, I think it was a Girl Scout troop pushed, it passed, and Town Hall's constantly getting calls about, wait, what does this do? And I think it's that same six-month window for full implementation. So, every municipality is doing it a little bit different in their education, the before, the during, the after. So, I don't think there's an entirely clear path for us, so...
But you, you have enough information that you can move forward?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you say not to do the public forum yet?
I'd say bring someone in to present, you know, like SCARA, or someone else who might be a better expert, you know, whoever's a good expert is. So, at this point, I'm not sure we should take any action, honestly. I'd say let's get some more, you know, I'd like to make a few tweaks, get an expert in here and talk a little more, and then get the input. Especially because cutlery, the cutlery was a, you know, kind of a last-minute addition. I'd like to learn a little bit more about that myself, too, and...
So, there is a motion on the floor, and it's the motion that was in your packet.
Shall I withdraw my second?
Well, I'm trying to find out what people would like to do, so is your, would you like to vote on this motion, or would you like to defer?
Well, I...
Council Baumgartner, then Obera.
I respectfully disagree with Mr. Burt, only because I, I do think, I, I certainly think we can do that, but I think, you know, there is no, there's no time limit on, on scheduling a public hearing. So, we almost have an indefinite amount of time to kind of host these meetings, and, you know, whether it's SCARA, or having Mystic Aquarium, or engaging Yukon Avery Point, there's just so many stakeholders in the area that could offer so much guidance. Perhaps our, you know, our new resiliency task force, and, so, you know, get them kind of chimed in on the issue. So, I, I just think we need to do something, and, you know, and we need to send a message that we're serious about this, we're at least moving forward, because we, we've been talking about this for quite a while, and, and I know, you know, Council Heed has been working on this, and, and before you know it, we'll, we'll be in November, and, and so, I just, I think we should kind of hold ourselves to a very strict schedule in, in getting this to the finish line, because I think it's that important. And I, and one last point, I, we've talked a bit about kind of taking baby steps, and to my knowledge, Grotton's the largest municipality east of, of New Haven on the shoreline, and I think it would behoove us to really be the, I think, the, the example to the rest of the shoreline, that we can get this done, and perhaps even be the, you know, the blueprint for, for a, a plastics ordinance. So, I, I respectfully would not like to withdraw my, my motion.
Council Obera.
Well, I just wanted to say, I would not be uncomfortable with the motion that we have now. I think it's on the floor.
It is on the floor.
Thank you.
Yep.
I don't think I would be uncomfortable with that, because we're talking about doing just what we've all been talking about, a series of workshops. One of those workshops can be bringing in those people that are gonna educate us, and, and a public forum to gather input for the community, and then, you know, then schedule a public hearing. And I, I think that's exactly what this says, and I think that's what we'd be best to do.
I agree with Council Baumgartner and Council Obera that we should go ahead with the motion that's on the floor. Council Schmidt.
I agree with that, too. I think we all are in agreement that we want to do something about plastics, but we're unsure how we should really approach it, so that we do it in the best way possible for the town of Grotton. And I think that this is a good motion, and I would hope that we would all vote for it.
Anyone, anyone else wish to speak on this? Okay, having no further discussion. We will vote on 2019-282.
Do we have a second for the motion?
It was done before by Baumgartner and Franco.
I thought Franco rescinded her second.
She withdrew her second.
So, Council Baumgartner moved the motion?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I just, I want to be clear, I thought...
I asked if I should.
She offered to withdraw it.
If you should, okay, all right.
Do you wish to withdraw your second?
No.
Okay, so, the motion is on the floor, moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Franco. Seeing no further discussion, 2019-282 Single Use Plastic Reduction Ordinance as written in your packet. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Baumgartner, Parker. Oh, it's unanimous. Very good. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very good.
We were safe in our, the entertainment.
Okay, and we are now on to, we have an overview of other agenda items, I don't believe. Other business?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Other business? I have something that I need to say as well. I'm not sure if I need to do this at the council meeting or not, but I'm doing it now, and if I need to do it at a council meeting, too, I'll do it then. I am appointing Zell Stever to chair the Grotton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force. Asked for the ordinance. Council Parker.
Besides the Earth Day that was planned for Saturday, there will be a National Drug Takeback Day at the Grotton Senior Center and at the Grotton Municipal Building from 10:00 to 2:00. So, if you have any old medications, please drop them off. Besides, also, there are drug boxes at both police stations if you cannot make it on Saturday. Two, there's a toucher truck in support of Autism Month that will be hosted at the City Municipal Building on Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00. And want to wish Grotton Little League, which will be having their opening day on Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the best, and there's a little parade, so the public is invited, so just want to let everyone know.
Any other business? Council Baumgartner.
Outstanding appointment of Mr. Stever, and is the...
I'm sorry?
I said outstanding appointment of Mr. Stever to the, as chair of the, the task force. Has the task force been finalized yet?
They're meeting tomorrow night.
And the, the roster of, of members?
Yes, it's set. We voted that last week, week before. Last council meeting, we voted it.
All right, I think that was a meeting on Sabina, so...
What's the name of that committee again?
Grotton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force. Any other business? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Moved by Parker, is her second.
Second.
Seconded by Obera. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. We adjourn at, it's like 9:50.